At this time, I'd like to call to order the Monday, April 21st, 2025 Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order. At 5:00, we had two work sessions, one to go through some of the budget and the next one was a Fire and EoMS Advisory Board. This time, I'd like to recognize Pastor Mark Goines from New Life at Currituck for invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let's pray this evening. Lord, we come before you tonight in awe of your presence and your power, your majesty, your mercy, your love. We gather, Lord God, in this place of leadership and service and we're reminded even of the season that we came through this weekend that we celebrate a season of hope, renewal, and victory. Lord, we thank you for the gifts that you've already given us, the gift that we have in Christ. Amen. We thank you, Lord God, that his resurrection reminds us that even in the darkest times there's light and triumph, this power, this promise. Well, we pray for wisdom and guidance for the members of this board tonight as they make decisions that impact our community. We pray, Lord God, that they might lead with integrity and courage and compassion. We also pray, Lord God, that they might seek the good of those that are in that, in our community above themselves, help them to find strength in you when challenges arise, help them to remain steadfast in purpose, oh Lord. God, we ask that your spirit would be present in this room tonight, guiding every word, guiding every action, guiding every thought, and may your peace rest upon us and may your glory be reflected in the work that is done here tonight. We offer this prayer in the mighty name of Jesus and our hearts say amen. And amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Goines. At this time, I'm going to allow our county attorney to read the Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest Reminder.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public comment. Please limit your comments to matters other than those appearing on this agenda as a quasi judicial evidentiary hearing. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Our first person signed up for public comment is Brian Mead, and when you come forward, I ask that you restate your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Mead, 116 North Marshall. I'm here today on behalf of Currituck County's Local Firefighters Association. There's been a lot of talk about the job that we do over the last few months. I felt as though you guys needed some representation or some input from the people that are actually doing that job. We show up 365, 24/7. Staffing has been a challenge, but it's been a challenge throughout the nation. People aren't wanting to do our jobs anymore, so the staffing constraints with our staff currently have been there. I'm the local president. I ran on a platform with these three things in mind, their pay, their work-life, and their work-life balance. Those are the three things that I'm concerned about. And with the pay study having come out, we all know what the pay looks like. But to give some idea of what we do on a daily basis is the average call time for a mainland unit is three hours. That is, from the time of dispatch to the time that they clear back in the county, not back at their station, but by the time they clear to come back into the county. You run four calls back to back, and in three hours, that means that you have not seen your fire station for almost 12 to 14 hours. And then also, that doesn't include any of the special events that happen at these fire stations or anything along those lines, okay? So we know what the pay is and we know that you're working diligently on it, okay? I support all of you here. By me being here, I'm offering to help you work through these problems. I just sat through your work session, and believe me, it's a tall task to work through because not only do you have to keep public safety in mind, but you also have to keep a budget in mind and you have to keep these other things in mind. So my offer to you is, is please reach out to me, use me, ask me questions that you may have, may not have the answer to because the decisions that are made here affect the work that me and my membership do, whether they're good or bad, okay? And we want to give you the real perspective of what's actually happening out there, not a piece here or a piece there or anything like that. Because until you do this job, you don't really understand the trials and tribulations and the things that we go through on a day-to-day basis. Yeah, we show up, we run the calls, we try to make the citizens' lives better, and that's all we want. We want to make Currituck County better, okay? So please, reach out to me. I did send you guys an email with my contact information. I will make myself available to you to get this through. So please, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate what you guys do. Next, we have Chief Richard Shortway.
I'm here for Corolla Fire and Rescue.
Address.
Richard Shortway, 584 Ocean Trail, Corolla.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of Corolla Fire and Rescue. I know it's budget season, and I just want to speak about my capital that I've been rolling over, and the purpose of my capital is for the new fire engine that keeps getting delayed. We were set with a price from the county and the extras that were put on that fire truck for out in Corolla with a night scan, different things, cost a lot more money. So we in Corolla had saved money and we left it in our capital, and there's $73,000 there that's to pay for the extra stuff on that new engine that's supposed to be here in February. And as far as our membership in Corolla, I'm lucky, I have a paid fire department, but I have 52 volunteer members besides the fire department. You know, so we're very strong out there. We have a great rehab crew that goes anywhere in a county. They show up at Lower Currituck, they made it down to Mans Harbor Fire, and we were one of two in the whole Outer Banks for the rehab for the firemen. You know, so it's a great support that we have after the first new engine leaves the firehouse. The volunteers are responsible for the truck, the other engines, brush trucks, whatever we have there. So I got a great group out there and we're strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for all you guys do. Next, we have Lauren Birch. Please give us your name and address for the record, please.
Lauren Birch, 117 Alex Lane, Marquette, North Carolina. First, thank you for letting me talk tonight. I was going to give you an update. Thank you so much for passing the resolution. That decision document went to the Southern Advisory Committee, the Northern Advisory Committee, and then the Blue Crab Crest Station Advisory Committee. All three advisory boards voted to not do anything until their stock assessment review can be, can, we can have a stock assessment that's passed peer review and as well as move the vote for this amendment back to August. I know that there's a meeting coming up in May. I'm not sure if that's still on that original agenda or not, or if they've changed that yet, but as of last week, they didn't know what they were going to put in front of Marine Fisheries at this time. I have talked to Robert Corbett, who's the Species Lead at Marine Fisheries, and he's also talked about, I guess with you passing the resolution, Hyde passing the resolution, Turrell County passing the resolution, a lot of our legislators are calling and talking about this, and that means the world to a bunch of crappers. They're on the boat, they're the salt of the earth, but they are not standing in front of a board very often and talk, and it's mattering, it matters, sorry, that was horrible grammar. However, even if this gets pushed back, we're still looking at Amendment 6 that's coming out in 2026. So we ask for your continued support and just wanted to say thank you, give you a little update. I know you'll have a lot of news to read. Another issue, if you're interested, is the flounder is going to, from a 60/40% ratio from commercial to recreational, and it is now going to 50/50 recreational to commercial for flounder. So just to let you know, if y'all want to start a board, you were talking about that before. Thank you.
Ms. Birch, could you keep us apprised of whenever those meetings are? And we plan on having a work session with the commercial fishermen to hear what they have to say and what the problems are they're experiencing, and then we plan to send letters, resolutions to the Marine Fisheries and our legislators. We're lucky that we have legislators representing us that care about the commercial fishermen, but once you get past 95, it's a different, different world. So if you could just keep us in the loop, and we're going to, if you can be our contact person when we set up that work session with the commercial fishermen, we'll count on you to get the word out.
I'd love to. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, Lauren, if you would, just keep sending everything to me like you have been, and I'll make sure everybody gets it.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you so much. Let me do your homework.
Yes, thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Powers.
I made some light reading copies here for you guys if you want to pass those out.
Here you go.
And I know I got three minutes, I'll try to be brief. I've been accused of the past, I don't tell short stories. My name is Susan Powers, I live at 251 Greenview Road, which is Eagle Creek. Some of you know me, I've been here in the past talking about sewage. I've also emailed you, I've emailed Bobby, I've emailed, talked to Rebecca today about what's going on with our sewage. The reason this packet I gave out to you is giving you a little backstory in addition to all the problems we've had. Back in February of 2024, a moratorium was issued by DEQ that there was, should be no new sewer tap, sewer expansions, or additional flow tapped into our sewer treatment plant. I drive by that for Foston Flora every day, and construction stopped when they issued this moratorium. So in August of '24, they issued a pump and haul permit to allow them to start building again. And so they had requirements as to, if they built a certain number of houses, they had to pump a certain number of gallons, and every time increased, they had to do a certain number of gallons. The 4,000 gallons, I've been told, is effectively a sewage pump truck that you see on the road. We were concerned in the neighborhood because they're building houses and we have not seen a single pump truck in our neighborhood, and I live a few houses down from the sewage treatment plant. That expired in December, so then I also sent, included a copy in March of this year, a notice of violation was issued because they are issuing certificates of occupancy and they're not pumping sewage. So all of that, washing dishes, flushing toilets, taking showers, all that's going into our sewage treatment plant, which is not operating effectively. I've reached out to both the county, I've told, let's see, my concern is what good are these requirements that the builder had if they're just blatantly ignoring them, which they are? And I've also reached out to DEQ as of last week. Currituck Water and Sewer has not responded whatsoever to this notice, they have completely ignored it. Building has not stopped. There are six houses right now framed out, ready to be finished, looks like they delivered wood for another house, have not stopped construction. Let's see. And also, another kind of side note is they were also required at some point that all the treated sewage, once it's been treated, could be returned back to Foston Flora instead of being dispersed in our dispersal system. They've installed that pipe, but they have not returned the sewage, treated sewage back to Foston Flora, so it's staying in our neighborhood. I have talked to DEQ a couple of times, they said they were out there recently, the last few weeks, inspecting our sewage plant, and they still have significant concerns about our sewage plant. So my overall concern right now is nobody's clamoring right now because our sewage is working, but I don't know what the tipping point is going to be for it to not work, if it's going to be one more house, 20 more houses, but I just don't want it to get to that point because we were down for 30 days where we couldn't take a shower, wash dishes, go to the bathroom, we had to have the Baptist men bring laundry for us to do laundry, they had to bring showers for us to do showers, and I'm trying to prevent that. So what I'm asking you today, I know you've told me in the past, you have no control over the sewage, but you do have control over certificates of occupancy and building permits, and I want those to be paused and stopped until all this is resolved. Thank you for talking to me. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Powers. I'd like our staff to address the authority that we have over this situation.
Yeah, I don't think we have the legal authority to, to not issue the certificates of occupancy. We haven't been directed by DEQ to do anything, unfortunately.
Because they also passed the ball kind of back to you guys as well, so I mean, somebody, somewhere has to do something.
Can we have somebody from DEQ come down here and meet with us and explain to us what's going on?
I mean, they can't pass the buck to us because we're limiting.
They can't pass, yeah. We don't, we don't regulate sewage. It's a private system.
Yeah, sure, we can ask, absolutely.
I mean, have you gotten any contact from Currituck Water and Sewer at all as her response to this, that's responsible for the sewage?
Has DEQ shared this with you, Air County Manager? Are you aware of this? I'm not aware of this, what she's just shared. Well, you haven't even seen it.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Ms. Powers, the pump and haul, are they still doing the pump and haul in Eagle Creek or lately?
They're not pumping and they are not hauling anything.
Not in Eagle Creek, but what are they doing where they had the special permit for the Foston Flora? Because I've seen a pump truck come.
So when somebody goes, somebody uses sewage in Foston Flora, it doesn't stay in Foston Flora, it goes to Eagle Creek to be treated. So the theory was that our treatment plant was working, it wasn't having issues, so it would be treated here and then returned back to Foston Flora once it's treated. That was the original theory. Well, our treatment plant is not operating, so that's why they issued that moratorium. So the water's supposed to come to Eagle Creek, and the whole point of the pump and haul permit is that there's no additional water being treated at our treatment plant because it can't handle what it had right at that point.
Because I've seen, I know in the last couple of weeks, I've seen Island Septic, I believe, the green and black truck come out of Foston Flora a couple of times, so I'm assuming it was.
Well, instead of getting all this third party, I think, yeah, we get DEQ here.
Well, I've seen it.
Yeah, they, they should, it's not coming from Foston Flora, it's coming from our treatment plant.
From you, okay.
Yeah, so it's supposed to not come to our treatment plant to add additional burden to our treatment plant.
So to cut through the fog, I'm going to ask DEQ to come and meet with their manager and staff, and if some of the commissioners want to come or whatever, to get the definitive answer as to what was permitted, what's being done, and where we are, because we do not regulate a private sewage system, and this is a private sewage system.
And how we should proceed.
Right.
I'm also going to be, happen to be in Greenville at the end of the week, so I'm actually going to go to Little Washington, because they're based out of Little Washington, and see if I can also meet with someone in person myself, too.
Okay.
Let me just add, about four, five years ago, this first came up, I know we had a meeting in Raleigh, and I know our senator now was there at that roundtable meeting with residents and.
And that was trying to get the sale from Sandler to CWS to go through, which took like three years.
Correct, so we had.
That's finally done. So Sandler's completely out of the.
But we, we did, we did try to do that one time, may take that again, I don't know.
If I could just add, and this was some information that I shared with the board last week, that there is a pump and haul permit that has been issued for Currituck Water and Sewer. The goal there is that any, whatever, the equivalent sewage that is sent to the plant must be taken from the plant, that's, that's the purpose of the pump and haul permit, because the moratorium on the plant is still in place. So the county does not have the right to hold certificates of occupancy for permitted sites associated with a valid state permit. The county will continue to issue certificates of occupancy on permitted sites unless DEQ directs the county to cease issuance of the certificates of occupancy due to noncompliance with the pump and haul permit. DEQ has indicated that they will not ask the county to not issue certificates of occupancy for permitted sites. So to date, and actually I have an updated number, 37 certificates of occupancy have been issued.
Okay.
Does that include all the condos?
I, I don't know the.
Yeah.
So where we're going to leave this is we're going to ask DEQ to give us a direct person to speak to and gets updated information for the board, then we'll disseminate it to the community as soon as we get it.
And I also, too, have talked to David May, and I, and I told him I have no right to make this, but you know, I also feel I have the right for my opinion because I've been so deep in this, that I want them to revoke that pop and haul permit because CWS is flagrantly just disregarding it, basically.
Well, that's a determination they'll have to make, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for talking, and I think, you know, you guys got emails from me, so if there's anything else you need from me, just let me know.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I went over three minutes.
That's okay. All right. Next item is Administrative Reports, Charters of Freedom Presentation. I believe we have some folks here tonight. Sir, if you could please tell us a little bit about you, and then you can have the floor.
Thank you. First, thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight. I usually travel with my friend and colleague, Ron Lewis, but he's in the Midwest right now taking care of some family business.
Hold on one second. There was three other people that were signed up for public comments, but you actually are, wanted to talk on the spot road, so you'll be called on when that comes up. So I didn't skip you, David. I saw you looking at me.
I see you.
All right, I'm sorry, sir.
That's fine. I usually travel with a friend and colleague, Ron Lewis, but he's having to take care of some family business in Nebraska right now, and so I'm flying solo, except for my wife, who's waiting for me down below. Anyway, I'm David Streeter, and I am the Education Director for Foundation Forward, and I'm going to talk about something that's positive, okay? And give you a chance to see what we do and what we would like to give to this, to your county, which is very nice.
I'd like the audience to keep their conversations, we can, they're a little loud.
Oh, okay, maybe I'll.
No, no, it's not your fault, no.
Not you.
The audience to keep their conversations.
Oh, okay, yes. Anyway, what I would like to do is start off by telling you just a little bit about Foundation Forward. We are an educational organization, and we build replicas of the Charters of Freedom as they are in the National Archives in Washington, DC. That's, it has the Declaration of Independence, United States Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and we being a progressive, nonprofit, educational organization, we now have put together some of the main civil rights amendments, and we include those with the other documents of the Charters of Freedom. We build these outside with capacity for people to see them 24/7, and I have a video that, did the PowerPoint make it in?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to find it.
And I have it in my pocket if something happened.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Clap your hands, it'll start.
Okay.
Do we have a technology person for Rebecca? It's embedded?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I didn't know that. Whoops.
Right there.
There we go.
Yeah, there we go.
Right here?
On, three more slots, three slots.
Couple more.
Yeah.
There it is.
Right there. Okay, there we go.
Okay, well, you can just use that.
Okay, thank you very much. First of all, we do not build monuments, we build settings, and the reason so is a monument pays homage or a, I guess, reward to something or a place or a thing that's no longer with us. The Bill of Rights, I'm sorry.
It's right there, yes.
There we go, okay. The Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, all of those things give us what we enjoy every day as far as our liberties are concerned and freedoms, so therefore we have named these settings and not monuments. That, I have been with the organization now for a number of years, and it was probably our first or second staff meeting that various terminology was being thrown around, and having studied a little bit of the law, being a criminologist, I was like, you know, I don't think that, that the word monument is appropriate, and so they asked me what I thought it would be, and I told them setting, and based on that, that's what we use to this day. We are an apolitical and a religious organization, we are an educational organization, we do not support any political party or any religious doctrine one over the other. What we are, though, is we are nonprofit and that we build the Charters of Freedom across the country. Right now, we have a setting as far north as Alaska, one as far west as at the Reagan Library and Memorial in Seminole Valley, California, one as far south as Daytona Beach, Florida, and now hopefully this will be one to the very far east. We have built, in North Carolina alone, we have built 45, and we have five also in progress right now, plus others throughout the country. Now, what I want to do, if I could, is show you this video. I hope it works. Technology is not always on my side, but it's a real short video of about four minutes. Audio?
It's in the right corner.
Echo?
The number one principle of education, no matter what you take to this experience, it all goes back to education. Education on American history, to preserve that history, surround it, the founding of our country.
It appears.
I can't get the video, I mean, the audio to come on.
We can just watch it.
It's okay.
We'll watch the video and then you can tell us about it.
Okay.
Or you can tell us about it as it goes through.
Well, as you can see here, this is what they look like in the National Archives. This is an example of some people looking at one that we've already built. I think this one's in. this one's in, yeah, this is in Lenore, North Carolina, in Caldwell County.
Allowance, immunity, a place where they can gather, to celebrate, to honor, and to retrain. People ask us, what are we doing?
They have rubbings on, a couple of different places on the settings, such as We the People, we encourage especially schoolchildren to come out with pieces of paper and etch where the etches are, and to color those in from a crayon or pencil.
If you want a monument or a setting to last, you put more underground than above ground.
Obviously, these are some construction pictures, we go down three and a half feet, and then with concrete filled in, so the foundation is incredible.
It weighs over thirty-eight thousand pounds, over nineteen tons. There are six documents displayed, all are life-size.
This is how we make the documents, they're on aluminum, so they'll last forever.
It's on quarter-inch edge bronze, and weighs over sixty pounds.
This is just a typical setting, this one's in Newton Conover, which is a neighboring community to Hickory, North Carolina.
The seven stars among you represent the seven articles of the United States Constitution. The ten stars under the earth represent the first ten amendments to your Bill of Rights. From the beginning, this has been an education project. We learned, we had two founding fathers who were very big on education, Thomas Jefferson and Benjamin...
Jefferson and Franklin, they were big on education, and that's the reason we pattern a lot, what we do after them.
That you cannot control what you do not understand. Thomas Jefferson...
And your organization pays for this?
Yes, sir, for the most part. Vance Patterson is the benefactor and founder, along with his wife, of Foundation Forward. They pay for most of this, we recently got a grant from the state of North Carolina, thank you very much, that has helped us with this. We have guidelines that we are, have to follow to build these with certain amount of time. We would like to make this county a priority in building the charters of freedom here in your community. This is Vance Patterson right here, like I said, he's our co-founder, along with his wife. He really got the inspiration by doing this as community projects, like I said, across the country, by visiting the charters of freedom in Washington, for the first time when he was sixty years old, he doesn't want others to have to wait that long, or he knows that some people may never make it to Washington. And with these, with this structure and these documents, this is a great opportunity for not just the community, but especially for the school system, and I'm sure you have a number of colleges and universities in the area. They are great for bringing students for field trips from those, whether it be criminal justice, or constitutional law courses, criminal law courses, et cetera, but also for the schoolchildren, and we have a number of educational type of materials that we also provide to the county at no cost. Let's see if I can get back down to where we were now. This is our headquarters in Bowdies, North Carolina, you can see there, here, that we have one, that has the, the document, including the civil rights amendments to, to the far right. This is dedication, after we build every charters of freedom setting, then shortly thereafter, we have a dedication to where a lot of you would be asked to speak there, and it's, it's a fun time, we like for the local schools to participate in the band, the chorus, whatever's available. Here's what it's all about, this is a rendition of a teacher talking with students in front of a charters of freedom setting, and this happens to be an actual drawing of the one in Morganton, North Carolina, beside the historic courthouse, which was the first charters of freedom setting built anywhere out of Washington DC. This is a couple of pictures with students attending a lesson at their local charters of freedom setting, and that's per, that's pretty much it. We do have, like I said, complimentary education materials that we give to students and teachers after it's built, for them to bring their students to see this and to read it, year after year. We ask them to bring it, bring them in buses, we pay for transportation costs in addition to the education materials, and all you've got to do is vote to let us build this. What Foundation Forward takes care of is the setting itself. If the county would want additional things around the setting, such as concrete, run-ups, flagpoles, exterior lighting shining on it, that would be the responsibility of the county. And if you have any questions, I'm open to those.
Anybody have questions?
Just out of curiosity, how long does an installation take?
In a perfect world with really good weather, it can be done in about six weeks. Yeah. One of the big, one of the big challenges that we have had recently is finding brick masons, so, but we, we've always been able to meet the challenge, but sometimes it takes a little while, so we will be coming to you asking, hey, do you know someone who does such and such in your community?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just curiosity, too, that have you researched the county and found a site that would be applicable for this?
Well, I'll admit, this is my first time here.
Okay.
But I'll have, I'll have to say, this courthouse is incredible, and the way that we build these, they would, one would look beautiful right out on the front lawn, out on the street, right here. It takes a, takes a footprint of approximately, and I always overestimate, but twenty by forty to build it, and you may have other suggestions, and we're open to that. Also, our construction manager would also have to be involved to make sure there's not anything in the way of building it wherever it may be, so, but I'll have to, I'll have to admit, out front here would be absolutely gorgeous. Also, I encourage you to go to our website, chartersoffreedom.com, or foundationforward.com, either one of get you to the same place. Look at our website and some others that we have done, like I said, we've already done almost fifty in North Carolina, we're doing five more right now, as I said earlier, and plus those in various spots across the country.
What I would recommend is that you and the county manager discuss this forward further, and then she could bring forward to us a proposal, and then we could vote as to whether to move forward or not.
Okay, and once we do that, which I'm happy to do, we, we use what most people call a memorandum of understanding, we call it a letter of intent, it's, it's one and the same, pardon me, just outlining who does what, and whose responsibility is to do what, so that could be a part of our discussion as well. But like I said, this is a gift to, to the county from Foundation Forward, and would be very honored to have it here. Our goal is to put one in every county in North Carolina, and we're about halfway there.
All right, well, we appreciate you coming, and if you and the county manager will correspond and bring us something that we can look at, then we can give you an answer.
Okay, and I hope that it would be positive. Thank you, I'm sorry I took more than three minutes, so...
We'll just, we'll just cut it against your next time.
Okay, I don't usually talk that...
All right, um, our next agenda item is regional hazard mitigation plan review with Mary Noons from Emergency Management, actually, the Director of Emergency Management. Ms. Noons?
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come in tonight and talk to you about our plan update. It is called the Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, and we are teamed together with Dare County to create the plan. And the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update is a requirement at the federal level through Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Communities are required to update their hazard mitigation plans every five years to remain eligible for pre- and post-disaster funding. This update will ensure that if there is any federally declared disaster in North Carolina, Currituck and Dare Counties will be able to apply for the hazard mitigation grant, oh, I'm sorry, hazard mitigation funding that would be coming through. Having an updated plan also ensures our communities will be ready with mitigation project ideas whenever funding does come available. North Carolina Emergency Management secured funding and contracted with a company called WSP to work with our counties to be sure our, our plan meets the federal requirements. The Hazard Mitigation Plan isn't just paperwork, it's our roadmap for reducing risk, so WSP took a whole community approach to the, the planning, using a committee made up of county employees and community stakeholders. The stakeholders are Laura Eddy from the Nature Conservancy, Carol Frazier from the Pillmore Food Pantry, Anthony, Anthony Dickinson from Farm Bureau Insurance Group, and Jason Somerton from Twitty and Company. WSP also reached out to the community, there were public meetings and media releases posted that requested the community to review and provide comments, as well as a hazard mitigation survey that was made available to the public in April of 2024 through October of 2024. We had four hundred and seventy-five citizens that responded to that, we had fifty, fifty-seven percent of those that responded said that they have had experience with a hazard or disaster in the Outer Banks area. Seventy-nine percent of those people were highly concerned about future hazards. Seventy-one percent of all of the respondents rated their concern at a four, five, out of five. People were asked to rate the risk of each hazard identified in the region, like hurricanes, floods, coastal hazards, and severe weather, they were rated the highest. Earthquakes, radiological emergencies, terrorism, and hazardous material incidents were at the low end. Thirty-seven percent of people say their home is located in a floodplain, and another ten percent state their home is outside a floodplain, but they still experience flooding. Sixty percent of the respondents felt, or have flood insurance, twenty-seven percent of those who did not have insurance said it's because their home is elevated or otherwise protected. Fifty, fifty-seven percent of the respondents have taken actions to protect their home. We used a four-phase planning process when we went through the plan. We organized the resources, we put together the committee, involved the public, and coordinated with the stakeholders. We conducted a risk assessment, that was phase two, that identified hazards and evaluated the problems. So hazard identification is, so what could happen here? We identified hazards like drought, excessive heat, flooding, hurricanes, of course, tornadoes and thunderstorms, severe winter weather, wildfires, cyber threats, and terrorism. Then we looked at our vulnerability assessment, and that's what, what will be affected or impacted by the identified hazards. WSP utilized the North Carolina Emergency Management Program called IRisk that shows estimated loss to buildings, infrastructure, critical facilities, and people. Then they also used a tool from FEMA called HAZIS for flood, earthquake, and hurricane wind loss estimates, and they also used EMAP consequence analysis. They moved on to the capability assessment, so how, how do we as a county manage and implement mitigation? We have relevant plans in place here in Currituck, like the hazard, this hazard mitigation plan, a land use plan, storm water management plan, the emergency operations plan, and we also have building and fire codes. We also have personnel resources, such as a building official, emergency manager, a floodplain manager, and engineers. We have relevant fiscal resources, such as capital improvement program, special purpose taxes, water and sewer fees, and development impact fees. The plan looks at other county capabilities, such as how we mitigate things and our political views, and it comes up with an overall capability rating of moderate, and notes that it is a slight increase from when we did our plan five years ago. So then we move to phase three, which is developing a mitigation strategy. We start by setting goals, we review the goals from the previous plan to determine if they're still relevant and appropriate. We update them as needed, and the group came up with four goals. Goal one, reduce the risk of loss of life and personal injury from hazards. Goal two, maintain critical facilities and infrastructure and protect them from damage. Goal three, ensure the hazard mitigation practices, construction techniques, and development policies and ordinances are integrated to enhance resiliency and enable speedy recovery. Goal four is to improve interjurisdictional cooperation and coordination, and leverage state and regional resources to support our mitigation. From those goals, we created ten objectives, and, and they developed, after we developed those, we moved on to our actions. We've, we reviewed the actions of the prior plan, we considered action ideas, each of FEMA's, we considered action ideas from each of FEMA's mitigation categories, prevention, property protection, structural projects, emergency services, natural resource protection, and public education. And then the draft, and action, we drafted the action plan. We developed and priority, prioritize mitigation actions and evaluated hazards, and decided who is responsible, project timelines, how projects will be funded, et cetera. Currituck established thirty-five mitigation actions, which can be reviewed in section seven of the plan. Samples of these include direct development away from high-risk and vulnerable areas, and establish redevelopment standards that decrease hazard risk, retain vegetation and require buffers in areas adjacent to wetlands, water body, water bodies, and maritime forests, provide continuous training and information for first responders, first responders in hazard response, and periodically survey the public to evaluate if public outreach efforts are effective in identifying potential flood hazards, public concern, and ways to mitigate against hazards. So then we move to phase four, which we're at right now. Phase four is the adoption and implementation, so we'll implement, evaluate, and revise the plan. We'll continue to revise the plan over the next five years to ensure forward movement on the established actions. The Outer Banks Hazard Mitigation Plan has a vision statement, and it is, the Outer Banks region will maintain its unique quality of life and sense of place while planning and preparing for resilience in the face of future hazards. The region will prepare for and adaptable, repair, I'm sorry, will be prepared for and adaptable to hazards, and when confronted with disaster, the region will recover stronger and smarter in a planned, balanced, sustainable manner that acknowledges the dynamic nature of that hazard risk in a changing climate. Through innovative and collaboration, the Outer Banks region will ensure a thriving, safe environment for residents and visitors. I hope you had some time to review the plan, and you're ready to adopt it tonight, and I thank you for your time, and I will try to answer any questions if you have any.
Anyone have any questions of Ms. Noons? So this is for adoption tonight.
Yes, that's correct, it's on the consent agenda.
Okay, all right. I didn't see it for action, that's why I was wondering.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, do you adopt?
It's on the consent agenda, it'll be on the agenda later, yes, for adoption.
Oh, okay, never mind, I thought we had to act on it right now.
So now, if anybody has any questions, is the perfect time to ask.
All right, never mind then.
I believe you did a good enough job, no one has any questions.
All right, thank you very much.
We're gonna adopt it right now. We're going to adopt it right now.
Yeah, Mike was excited. He's ready to go.
I got excited with that. Man, sorry, sorry.
Thank you. All right, and now we're going to move into our quasi-judicial evidentiary hearings tonight. I will say, I'm going to go ahead and say this ahead of time, some of you signed up and you didn't have the best penmanship, so if I slaughter your name a little bit, don't be mad at me. I'll do the best I can.
Mr. Chairman, can we take like a five-minute recess before we get into the...
Want a five-minute recess? Okay, five-minute recess. Call the meeting back to order. Our next agenda item is PB 2427, The Meadows South Spot LLC is requesting a preliminary plat special use permit for a 56-lot conservation subdivision located in Powell's Point on the north side of South Spot Road, tax map 124, parcels 28, 36A, 36B, and 37 in Papa Branch Township. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to remind everyone that this next item is a quasi-judicial hearing. The Board of Commissioners are required to comply with procedural rules like that of a trial court. Y'all can only hear sworn testimony and base your decision on material substantial and competent evidence when determining if this particular project meets the Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance, known as the UDO. I also would remind you that any kind of ex parte communication received outside of this hearing is prohibited. For this particular matter, there was an email that was circulated to you in error, and it was sent to the applicant, so they are aware, but I do want to remind you that you are not to consider that email in basing your decision on this matter tonight. Participation is limited. Those who can participate fully in this hearing are those, are the applicant, the property owner, and the local government, as well as individuals with standing. And that means that that person suffers some kind of special damages that is distinct from the community as a whole. By participate fully, I mean that they may present evidence, call and cross-examine witnesses, and make legal arguments. Expert witness testimony is required for certain topics, once they are duly qualified based on their education, experience, credentials, et cetera. The topics that they are qualified to testify to are ones about impacts on property values, impacts of increased traffic, and matters about which only expert testimony would generally be admissible under the rules of evidence in a trial court. Lay witnesses can testify, however, they also have to be sworn in, and they can only testify to facts of which they have personal knowledge. The procedure that we follow is swearing in of witnesses who plan on talking, presentation of staff report, applicant presentation, public participation, rebuttal evidence and cross-examination, and then the close of the hearing, and then the board will deliberate and make their decision.
Very thorough.
Thank you. So, at this time, anyone that has signed up to speak, you need to come forward to be sworn in. I'm only going to call people to be sworn in one time tonight, so if you don't come now, you will not be allowed to speak if you don't come to be sworn in. So, if you signed up on these papers to speak tonight, you need to come forward now to be sworn in. Going to ask everybody to place their left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and you may have to share one or two.
Thank you. Maybe not.
There's some behind you.
Come up.
Yep.
Good.
Raise your right hand. Right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do, yes.
Thank you.
Attorney Morgan and Mr. Chair, before we begin the staff report, I do, would like to be heard on one matter. Good evening. My name is Ashley Honeycutt-Tarazis with Parker Poe here representing the applicant. I'm also joined by my colleague Jamie Schwedler this evening. Mr. Chair and Attorney Morgan, the applicant requests that Commissioner Jarvis recuse herself from participating in this case because she has exhibited a fixed opinion prior to hearing and has had undisclosed ex parte communications about this matter. This qualifies as impermissible conduct under North Carolina General Statute 160D-109D, and her participation would violate the applicant's constitutional rights to an impartial decision-maker. I'm handing up a memorandum in support of this motion, which contains an affidavit, the affiant is here this evening, outlining the basis for this request, which is that Commissioner Jarvis attended the community meeting on this case, told attendees to fight against the project so she could vote to deny it. These statements were made in front of the applicant's associate, who heard her making similar comments to others after the meeting, and under established case law constitute a commitment to decide the case in a particular way. In Dellinger v. Lincoln County, which is cited in this memo, the Court of Appeals found that a commissioner's statements ahead of a hearing that he opposed the SUP constituted an impermissible bias, and the failure to recuse himself was a reversible error. Thus, to protect the applicant's due process rights and to prevent the appearance of bias as required by North Carolina law, we're requesting that Commissioner Jarvis recuse herself.
Did you say you had a sworn affidavit?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do. We have a sworn affidavit, and the affiant is here tonight. The county attorney would like some time to review this. We're happy to take a quick recess, but we would like to decide this matter this evening.
I would just like to make a comment since my character is being impugned here. I did attend the community meeting because we do receive those invitations. As far as me having a fixed opinion, that is absolutely not the case here, and as far as me telling people that if they oppose it, they do have the right to present evidence and fight it. That is not a violation, nor does it mean I have a fixed opinion in this case. They asked me specifically what could they do, and just like I tell everyone, like I would tell you, you have the right to a lawyer. Even if you had a property right, you have the right to present evidence. That does not mean I have a fixed opinion, so I will not recuse myself.
I was witness to that. I was there, and you said nothing along those lines. It was just show up.
All right. We're getting out of...
I will not recuse myself.
I'm going to ask our attorney to look that over.
Okay.
And this was also not disclosed in the record.
Maybe just a brief recess to review it.
Take a brief recess.
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to review the memorandum of law and the affidavit of John Chenoweth. According to the affidavit of this individual, he was present at the community meeting. Commissioner Jarvis was present as well, and according to him, he said that while having a conversation with an acquaintance, Commissioner Selena Jarvis approached us and told us, and in quotes, "that we need to organize if we want to fight against this project, and if we gave her one good reason, she would vote no." And then she walked away. So, I, and I know Commissioner Jarvis has already stated a few things, but I would just like to ask Commissioner Jarvis, in her own words, what exactly took place at that meeting and what you said, and is this an accurate representation of what you actually said at that meeting?
That is not, excuse me, that is not an accurate representation. Many people came up to me and asked what they could do, and I told them, like I tell people, they have the right to organize, they have the right to present evidence. The only thing that we as a board can consider is evidence. This is what I say at every community meeting if people are opposed to a project. The only thing we can consider is evidence. They have a right to organize and present evidence. And, no, I'm not looking for a reason to deny it. The evidence is what I'm going to look at. If the evidence shows that this is going to meet those four standards, like always, I will vote yes for it. If it does not meet those standards, based on the information presented, I will vote no.
So, you are of the opinion that you do not have a fixed opinion...
I do not have a fixed opinion.
Prior to hearing the evidence.
I do not have a fixed opinion.
Okay, so, the applicant's attorney cites a case, and I do think it's distinct from what we have here. In that case, she cites Dellinger versus Lincoln County. Now, I have not had the chance to review that case, but she states that the applicant's evidence in that case showed that a county commissioner made statements ahead of a quasi-judicial special use permit hearing that he opposed the special use permit application, and that he participated in community opposition to the project. Clearly, I don't think we have that here. In my opinion, based on what Commissioner Jarvis has said, I do not believe that she has a fixed opinion, and I think that she can participate in this hearing. Of course, if the board would like to make a motion to excuse her from voting, you are definitely allowed that opportunity. But in my opinion, I think that she can participate and vote in this matter.
Mr. Chairman, can we, I know you, did you read the whole affidavit? I mean, like, can we read the affidavit ourselves?
I mean, it's really short. I can read the whole thing.
Can you read it one more time?
Absolutely. So, this is an affidavit of John Chenoweth. I may not be saying that right. "I, John Chenoweth, being duly sworn hereby, depose and say, I am over the age of 18 years old, am under no disability, and have personal knowledge of all matters stated in this affidavit. I am an associate of the applicant for The Meadows Residential Subdivision, South Spot LLC," quote, "South Spot, and am working with South Spot on the project. I attended the community meeting for The Meadows Special Use Permit on November 13th, 2024, at the Powell's Point Senior Center. The formal presentation portion of the meeting ended shortly after 7:00 PM, and I stayed around to socialize with meeting attendees. While I was having a conversation with an acquaintance, Commissioner Selena Jarvis approached us and told us, in quotes, 'that we need to organize if we want to fight against this project, and if we gave her one good reason, she would vote no.'" And then she walked away. She was approximately one to two feet away from me when she made this statement. Based on her manner, and because I was not introduced at the meeting as a member of the applicant team, I believe Commissioner Jarvis did not know that I was a part of the applicant team for The Meadows when she made this statement to me. I observed her talking to other groups of attendees after the meeting, and I heard her making similar statements to others. Further affiant says not." And then he signed it, and it was notarized.
He is here as well, if anyone has questions for him, yes. And I believe that the proper procedure is to put it to a vote under 160D-109E, but I'll also make a standing objection that there were some undisclosed ex parte communications that were mentioned, and it's the applicant's right to know the content of those. So, if...
In addition to that email that I was referring to earlier?
Yes, in addition to the email.
Do you have those?
No, communications that were mentioned after the neighborhood meeting.
Sit up.
After, after the community meetings, discussions.
I have no communications after the community meeting. I have none. I will be happy to let you do my, do a public records request of my phone, my private email, my professional email. You may do a public records request of my personal phone, my county phone, my personal email, and my county email. I have had no conversations since the county, since the community meeting, and I stand by that. And once again, I am protesting the fact that this was brought up without a chance of any of us to review this, without a chance to properly look at it and properly respond before you made the accusations. This is egregious to my character, and I protest.
An objection, it was an objection made under state law to protect this objection under state law.
Ms. Morgan, do, are we required to vote on this or not?
Yes, I would recommend voting on whether you think Commissioner Jarvis should be excused from voting on the special use permit.
Motion could say that she should, or she should not.
Either one, whoever wants to make that motion, yes.
Okay, let's do a motion.
Look, can I ask, can I ask, excuse me, my voice, can I ask one more question? So, far as, and it happens, I mean, it's happened, I've went to the restroom and somebody tried to talk to us on something quasi-judicial, and hey, we can't talk about it. I mean, far as like, and I guess this is a question before we're going to vote to Commissioner Jarvis, can I ask her this question?
Sure.
I mean, did people, I mean, like, and you know, we've been, I've been to a couple of community meetings as well. Did people come up to you and ask, I mean, like...
What can we do? Absolutely.
Okay. And that's all I wanted to ask.
They asked, you know, are you going to vote against? And I told them once again, like I do when I have conversations about every quasi, the only thing we can consider is evidence, and they have a right to present evidence, but they have to hire an attorney. We cannot consider just opinions, and I tell every single person that asks me about any type of quasi-judicial hearing about that. I do not give them my opinion about it because I do not have a fixed opinion. Until I listen to the evidence, I do not have a fixed opinion.
And let me ask you this, Commissioner Jarvis. During the community meeting, did those individuals try to present evidence to you about this project?
No, not evidence. They asked questions. They basically asked, could we vote it down? And I, once again, every time I was asked, what can we do, is I have to listen to the evidence. That's how I presented it. That's, once the community meeting started, I did not say a word. I sat and listened. I listened to Mr. Bissel's presentation. Mr. Kaufman was there. I did not make any comments to them except friendly conversation, hello. I looked at the plans, which, you know, were different than the ones here, but still, I don't have a fixed opinion based on that plan or the one that is in the agenda packet.
So, if there's no other questions, I think a vote would be appropriate at this time.
All right, somebody make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we allow Ms. Jarvis to vote on this, this item this evening.
We have a motion. In a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
No. I suppose that...
What?
He's opposed.
Okay, it's six in favor and one opposed. Okay, I'm going to proceed. Who's doing the county presentation?
Ms. Turner, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to clean this up real quick.
I'm going to ask for another recess, Mr. Chairman.
For the rest of the night.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a reminder, this is a request for preliminary plat special use permit for 56-lot conservation subdivision located in Powell's Point. You can see here is arrow photography showing the site. You can see that Freedom Park is located to the north, there are some residential homes to the east, some residential homes to the south, and mostly vacant property here to the west with the Hodges, I believe it's Hodges Trailer Park there, along Kerituck Highway. You can see also that this application includes four pieces of property. The applicant did purchase these other properties here, so there would be a connection from Kerituck Highway, as well as one from Spot Road. Just a zoning map that shows the zoning of the main portion of the project here is single-family residential. The property here that's proposed for access and some open space is zone agriculture, and these properties out front are zone general business. The Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan classifies the site as G3 mixed-use centers and corridors. The G3 transect is supported by major transportation networks, public water and wastewater infrastructure, and a community greenway system that links neighborhoods to mixed-use areas. This sector provides for a wide range of uses, including mixed residential subdivisions with a variety of housing types. of housing types, and mixed-use developments that maximize the efficient use of space. Attractive mixed-use development can be achieved by incentivizing multi-story buildings that comply with design standards that emphasize building form, orientation, and architecture. This is all on the description of the G3 category of the land use plan. And the maximum density permitted in this G3 district transect in the Point Harbor subarea is up to three dwelling units per acre, per the Imagine Currituck Land Use Plan. Here's an overview of the proposed subdivision. It is a conservation subdivision. All major subdivisions in the single-family mainland zoning district are required to be conservation subdivision and required to provide a conservation theme. The theme for this subdivision is woodlands and wetlands conservation. The total area with all four tracts that will, or it is a portion of the four tracts that will be included here, 65.99 acres. But the subdivision will basically be reviewed based off of a single-family residential piece of property. You can see that that is 61.58 acres with .14 acres of wetlands for 61.44 acres of uplands, which is how we do the density calculation. So you can see that the most, the maximum density on this property was 61 lots, and the proposed density is .91 dwelling units per acre. So there's proposing 56 lots here. The minimum lot size is 25,000 square feet, and the open space meets the minimum 40% required within the residential zone portion. I will note here, and you can see that there's a match line here, and there's this inset, which is the properties between the subdivision and Keratok Highway. This area is proposed only for access, as well as a cluster mailbox unit, which is a post office requirement, and open space around the proposed right-of-way. The applicant is proposing to connect to county water. The lots will be serviced by on-site septic. The applicant has provided suitable site evaluations from Almaral Regional Health Services for every lot that's proposed. Stormwater is proposed to be ditched, and with swales and ditches, proposed to be collected in this large proposed wet pond, and there is an area on the plan for additional pond area if necessary, based off of the next phase of construction drawings. The streets are proposed, they're 50-foot, in a 50-foot right-of-way. I will note that the, this access along Keratok Highway does not meet the minimum, and this is in your staff report as well, the minimum separation from an existing driveway or street on Keratok Highway. The applicant did work with DOT, who, which indicated through an email that they would permit this separation distance of less than 1,000 feet, that the ordinance requires, and the ordinance allows, that the director may reduce the minimum separation distance due to the presence of existing streets. Make sure I hit everything here. The applicant is proposing street trees, as required by the ordinance, as well as street lighting that you can see here, which will be full cutoff lighting, which means that it'll be fully shielded and shined down only. There is a small portion of wetlands here on the property that requires a 30-foot ripper area buffer, and you can see that shown here on the plan. The applicant will pay a fee in lieu of parkland dedication prior to the final plat, in lieu of providing a small area for a park. The open space will be put in a conservation easement for preservation. There'll be a streetscape buffer. You can see that here along Keratok Highway. That's our major arterial buffer requirements. And there will be sidewalks along all the internal streets on both sides of the streets, except for this area that connects to the highway. It will just be a wider path on one side of the street until it gets down here. And you can see there's a crosswalk here where the sidewalks on both sides of the streets start. So it's just a zoomed-in version of that main entrance on Keratok Highway. You can see a proposed deceleration lane here, a proposed multi-use path here, the eight-foot path I just spoke of, the streetscape landscaping. And they did also propose, you can't see it here, but they did show an easement for future multi-use path if it's needed. There is some space there where that can be placed along Keratok Highway. Here's the typical lot detail. They're proposing 50-foot front setback, which is consistent with the conservation requirements of the SFM zoning district, proposing 15 and 1/2-foot side setbacks, and a 25-foot rear setback for the principal structure.
Ms. Turner, you said 15. What was the side setbacks?
15 and 1/2. That's what they're proposing. You can see that here, Commissioner McCord.
Okay.
So the application does show all four of the parcels, but I wanted to just point out for clarity, because it may not be exactly clear what's going on with these lots out here in the front adjacent to Keratok Highway. You can see that these hatched areas, this hatched area is currently part of Lot 4, and is proposed to be recombined with Lot 1 here. And this area is currently part of Lot 1, and is proposed to be recombined with Lot 4. This will allow the developer to retain the lot of record status on this lot, and to place that right-of-way in this portion of that property. There are several policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Land Use Plan in your staff report. There's land use policies here that you see pretty regularly. There's the Point Harbor Subarea Policy 6.1, which is that conservation subdivisions are valued over less compatible development types. And density bonuses should be considered for the conservation of additional open space. There's policies here related to providing infrastructure and county services, transportation policies, environmental goals and policies, parks and recreation goals and policies. These are the standards that the applicant needs to show that they can meet with respect to this proposed subdivision, that it will be in compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance, and meet these four findings that are required. The TRC did review the application and provide these comments, one being that the board may attach conditions of approval, including timing limits on residential lots to assure adequate public school facilities remain. The application is in conformance with the UDO. And with respect to the shifting of the parcel lines I just spoke about, a recombination plat of the parcels as proposed on the sheet of the preliminary plat shall be recorded prior to the approval of construction drawings. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Turner, can you go back to the recombination? Just, I'm kind of confused on what lots are getting recombined.
Four and one, I think.
Zigzag.
It's lots one and four.
And that's that whole area on the overview?
You mean, go back to a different page?
I'm just, I'm having trouble reconciling those lots with what I'm seeing on the context maps over the aerial.
If you, is this, is this map helpful that I have here, where it shows this is the current property line, and they're proposing that this be the sign here?
Oh, okay, yes.
And then so this part, this part will actually end up being part of Lot 4?
Okay.
And not a part of the subdivision, once it actually goes to record. And these, these street trees will actually have to be along the street and not on that portion.
Is that basically because of the way the street's being ran through there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Did you say the setback was 15 and 1/2 feet?
That was their proposed setback for the size.
But it has to be 15?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I thought I saw them there where it was 15, but you did say 15 and 1/2.
Yeah, they're showing that on the, here.
10 is, doesn't have to be 10, but it's 15 and 1/2?
In the SFM, I believe it's 15.
Either way, they're proposing 15 and 1/2.
Regardless, it's at least a half more.
15 and 1/2.
But it says 15. It says 15.
It says 15.5.
Yeah.
It says 15.5 right there.
I thought it was 10.
Right here? I'm looking at that 15. Okay. Okay, I see that, thank you. And you said minimum lot size was 25,000 square feet?
That's correct.
Are there other lot sizes, or are they all 25,000 square feet?
They're all 25,000 square feet, except for one, which is, let me show you.
Lot 1 and 4 look pretty big.
Well, it's not here. I believe it's, it's, what, maybe 21 here?
Okay. And would you also go back over that access to the main highway? I believe you said it did not meet the minimum?
Right. So the ordinance requires for new street intersections along Keratok Highway with the speed limit, the way it is in this particular area, that the new street should maintain a minimum separation of 1,000 feet from existing streets, and this doesn't quite meet that, or doesn't meet it. But the ordinance provides that the director, upon advice of DOT, may authorize a reduction in the minimum separation distance due to the presence of existing streets. And DOT indicated via email that the new street on Keratok Highway may be installed as proposed.
Do you know how many feet it is?
It's about 400 feet south of Freedom Avenue, which is a little bit, so from Freedom to the new proposed street is about 400 feet.
Freedom earlier.
What about, is?
Right.
Ms. Turner, that's, I mean, that's in the 45. Is that, does that vary? Because that's in the 45 now.
No, it's not. It's north of the 45.
It's right before it?
Yes. It's north of it.
That's 55, oh, that's, that's 55 to 70.
It's about 1,500 feet, Ms. Turner, from Spot Road, right? South Spot Road, excuse me. It's about 1,500 feet north of South Spot Road. Is that correct?
I'd have to, I'd have to measure it.
I think that's what was in the agenda packet, in the transportation, the traffic impact analysis.
In the TIA, it might say that, yeah. I don't have it in my staff report.
On page 83.
The cemetery is?
No, let me see.
Is that, it's on the west side of that unnamed road there that you're showing? Is that what the church cemetery is?
The church cemetery? It would be here.
Okay, there it is, okay.
There's a map in here.
Little surprised that DOT signed off.
They signed off, there you are.
It's in here somewhere. I mean, if it's supposed to be 1,000, it's only 400.
Yeah, it's on page 93, excuse, 93. It has that, is approximately 1,500 feet from Access 1 to South Spot Road.
That's in the TIA that I believe was provided to DOT for them to make the comment back.
But DOT has approved the access?
They have through, yeah, they have, they have given, through email, they have indicated that they will approve the access in that location.
With a stop light, right?
All right, more questions? I have a couple, Ms. Turner. This access on the South Spot Road, is that required?
Well, they need it to make, to meet the minimum interconnectivity score. So, yes.
Can it be gated for emergency? I mean, you're going to have a lot of people on South Spot Road already.
That would be, I believe, a matter of the board and the applicant as to what they will agree to.
There's a lot of traffic on the trash dump down there and everything else.
Well, you're going to have golf season coming in, there's going to be a lot of people
The road is busy.
Coming in and out of there. So just a question. My next question is, is setbacks, what are the setbacks to the adjoining commercial park at Freedom Park?
The setbacks on the rear?
Or the, or the buffer, the setbacks?
Well, they're, they're proposing a buffer here. You want to know how wide that is?
Yes, approximate.
Looks like.
In flood zone X.
See how wide that, these lots are?
So that's good.
Are they 100-foot lots?
Maps.
Let's see. According to this, they are 100 feet minimum width. So it looks like they're, it's about 100 feet.
How much?
It's about 100 feet.
It looks like it's about 100 feet in there.
And I believe that's already wooded. Would those be left?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll flip to the Spot Road. It doesn't look like there's that wide of a buffer along Spot Road. How wide is that buffer? That looks like not a whole lot.
Yeah, it varies. It's.
I don't have it on here.
I would just be guessing. I could try to pull up the full plat and...
What is the county's regulation on the buffer?
On this buffer?
Yeah.
Along Spot Road?
Yeah.
Along, there's a streetscape requirement, but I don't believe there's a buffer.
I was just curious why there's such a wide buffer on the other side that's industrial, and a lesser buffer on the side where it's residential. And, and the back of the lot, so I don't guess, I guess the applicant will have to answer those questions.
It's awful tight looking.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Not at the moment.
The buffer, the buffer's roughly 40, 40 feet or whatever is, and then when you said before, the 25 foot from the rear, is the 25 going to be from the, from the buffer as well? So that would be like basically 65, 66?
Where's that, that you're asking me?
On the Spot Road, from the rear sides of the lot. So the buffer there, I guess, is about 40 feet. So I'm just looking at these couple lots here. Will there be an additional 25 feet from that 40?
No, just be the setbacks on the property.
Okay.
Leanne, my presentation screen's blank.
I'll share mine. Here.
Well, I'm just, I don't know if there's a, is there a connection somewhere?
Yeah, push it, push it right there, the top, yep.
Technology is not a friend tonight.
Find out. I'm having all sorts of issues.
I have to turn it on. Now turn it on.
Let's make sure it works. Is it coming up?
Let's see if we reboot, there we go. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Anyone have any other questions of Ms. Turner? Hearing none, I'm going to go, I'm going to ask the applicant to come and do their presentation. And I'll ask the audience to be respectful while they're doing their presentation. I'm sure there's stuff you may not like, or you may disagree with, but you'll get your chance afterwards.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the Board of Commissioners, good evening. I'm Ashley Honeycutt Tarazas with Parker Poe here on behalf of the applicant. The Meadows is a proposed conservation subdivision that will feature 56 new attractive residential lots and 40%, or 26.86 acres of open space, in an area that's contemplated to support growth and housing on the Imagine Currituck Future Land Use Map. These half-acre, larger lots and open space are permitted under the property's single-family mainland zoning, which contemplates development like the proposed neighborhood. We will present competent material and substantial evidence... We will present competent material and substantial evidence this evening on each of the required SUP factors under UDO Section 2.4.6D using four witnesses. First, Mark Bissell, a professional engineer, will address Factors 1, 3, and 4 on conformity with the land use plan not endangering the public health or safety and schools. Mr. Andy Deal, a civil engineer as well, will address Factor 1 with respect to stormwater management. Andrew Top, a traffic engineer with VHB, will also address Factor 1 on the plan not endangering public health or safety as it relates to traffic. Hunter Howell is a licensed and North Carolina real property appraiser who will address Factor 2 related to the impacts to adjoining property in harmony and unity with the area. And the applicant also reserves the right to call other witnesses as needed. And at this time, to help streamline our presentation, the presentation of the applicant's evidence, I have some... I'm going to pass up some binders that contain sworn affidavits summarizing the testimony of each of our witnesses, as well as exhibits that we will admit into evidence this evening. So, Ms. Clerk, I have those binders right there.
I'll get these out if you want it.
Yeah, thank you.
Keep going.
Sure. No, I'll give her a moment to pass those out. And we have, like I said, all the affidavits and exhibits we plan to present this evening are in that binder. And so, we'll kind of help streamline the evidence as we move along through the presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to call Mr. Bissell. Mr. Bissell, can you please state your name and address for the board?
Uh, Mark Bissell. My office address is 3512 North Croatan Highway in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina.
And can you please describe your education and experience for the board?
I'm a professional engineer with Bissell Professional Group. I have a degree in civil engineering from Duke University. I've been practicing engineering for more than 40 years as a licensed engineer in North Carolina, around the state, and for over 40 years in Keratoc County doing projects like this one.
At this time, Mr. Chair, I want to tender Mr. Bissell as an expert in the field of civil engineering and site design. Can you please explain for the board your role in this project?
I'm the lead engineer for this project. And I oversaw the layout and the design of the special use permit plans in the application.
And at this time, we're going to talk about Page 3 of the preliminary plat, which is included in the binder at Tab 2. And it's also shown up on the screen. And can you please describe this document for the board?
Yes, this is the general layout sheet for the project, including the proposed phasing. And it's part of the overall preliminary plat in the middle. You can see that we're proposing two phases with a... There's a bold dash line that separates the two phases. It shows 56 new lots of minimum 25,000 square feet in a conservation layout with 40% open space. It preserves environmental features to the greatest degree practicable. It provides a direct access to Keratoc Highway and... Where you have access to commercial amenities and Freedom Business Park employment opportunities and such. The sidewalks, as indicated previously, will be provided on both sides of the street, except for along the access where a multi... A true multi-use path is being proposed to provide pedestrian connectivity. It is zone single-family mainland, which requires the 25,000 square foot lots and the preserved open space, which is being provided. The... There are two points of vehicular access to meet the UDO requirement. There's the access on the South Spot Road, which you can see right here. But the applicant actually acquired these three additional parcels in order to be able to provide the direct access to 158, which was primarily as a result of community feedback with concern about traffic, putting more traffic on South Spot Road. So, we expect the majority of the traffic to actually utilize the... The new access directly to 158.
Mr. Bissell, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the lots on the north side of the parcel that comes out to Keratoc Highway, I think that's called Pine Brook Lane, will those parcels have access to Pine Brook Lane? The ones up on the north side of Pine Brook Lane after the bend in the road?
Up here?
Yes. The... If you look at the inset there, there's... None of those...
Talking about here.
None of those will have access because of...
No, they will not. That'll be designated as open space.
I just wanted to make sure.
So, this slide does show additional information about the buffers. There were questions asked earlier. This is about 130 feet of buffer to Freedom Business Park that is intended to remain wooded to the greatest degree practicable. The type of buffer that's being proposed along South Spot Road is generally a 25-foot buffer, but we've actually increased that to an average of 50 feet and greater in some places. And that was also in response to some community feedback.
What type of buffer will that be?
It'll be... There'll be a planted buffer, and then there'll be trees that will be retained to the greatest degree practicable through there, between the lots and the road.
So, some of that tree line that's there currently will stay in place?
That's the intent. Yes, ma'am. We're also proposing a buffer along the... A planted buffer along the east side. We're going to retain trees here and here to the greatest degree we can. We're proposing a berm along here that will further buffer this. And that's... Andy Deal will talk more about that later. That is really a buffer to help manage stormwater.
Mr. Bissell, on the east side, that small buffer line there, that actually backs up to property owners right now?
Yes.
And how wide is that buffer between the existing property line?
That's 25 feet, but there's also an intent to leave trees on the backs of those lots to increase the effect.
Is it 25 feet between the two property lines?
That's right.
So, you described all the buffers. Can you please explain how the project is providing potable water to residents?
Right. There's an existing water line on 158 here that will be tapped, and that will be run down this access road. And then, throughout the development, it will be stubbed out here to South Spot Road for possible future extension to serve residents who need potable water in that area.
And can you please explain how the development is managing wastewater?
Alamoore Regional Health Services has done a... Has evaluated each of the 56 lots, and they determined that they are suitable for development. But each one will be approved as the building permits are applied for.
Does that include bringing in fill for each of the lots?
Some of them don't require it, but some do.
Okay. About half? What would you say?
Uh, I would have to go back and look at the reports. But the land generally rises up in this direction.
And goes to the, what, the southeast... Southwest corner?
Kind of south... Kind of northeast to southwest is the way the...
So, in the lower... The lower lots are those on the west side of the property?
Yes, the south and west.
So, is it a correct assumption that those are the lots that would need to bring in fill? The ones around the pond?
Yes. There actually is a topographic map in the packet that shows that the land, I think, ranges from below about 7 feet where the wetlands are up to a high of about 13 feet.
Okay.
And Alamoore Regional Health and an independent soil scientist has evaluated...
Exactly.
Yes, the lots, okay.
One last question. When they're evaluating, they're just evaluating the individual lot, not the whole subdivision? The effect of the whole subdivision, do they?
Well, they evaluate the lots, but they evaluate setbacks. They look at whether... What the rules are, what determine the effects of the subdivision. They look at the individual lots, but then the rules tell you how far you have to be from wells from potential sources of pollution, from water supply.
That's a per-lot basis.
That's pretty correct. And those things are all taken into consideration in the development of the rules.
And do the plans comply with all applicable UDO provisions?
They do. We've gone through several rounds of review, completed the TRC review process. There are a number of responses that are included in the packets, and there are no open issues with regard to compliance with the UDO standards.
And do the uses present concerns regarding public health and safety?
There are no outstanding concerns regarding public health and safety.
And now, we're going to turn to consistency with the comprehensive plan. With respect to Factor 3, are the proposed uses in conformity with the Imagine Keratoc land use plan?
They are. Regarding land use and density, the proposed density is consistent with the G3 designation. And in fact, there's a density well below what is actually allowed by that zoning district or by that land use classification, which recommends a density of up to 2 units per acre. We are down at about 91/100ths of an acre of a lot per acre. The infrastructure, water lines, and service are being directed in an area targeted for growth consistent with land use policies 1.2, 3.1, and 3.2. Also, additional stormwater management and mitigation will improve drainage and mitigate flooding hazards consistent with policy 4.1. Regarding transportation, the project will provide to pave public roadways and drainage infrastructure and will include roadway and pedestrian circulation within the neighborhood. We'll have the two access points required by the UDO, including a direct access to Keratoc Highway to ensure both vehicular and pedestrian traffic safety. This is consistent with land use policies 1.5 and 2.1. Parks and Recreation, consistent with policy 2.1, providing a multi-use path along the entrance drive and internal walkways to promote pedestrian connections.
And is the proposed use in conformity with the Lower Keratoc area guidance as well?
It is. Policy 1.1 calls for the fostering of growth and development while maintaining the distinctive natural environment and rural character of the community. And this neighborhood is an appropriate density that preserves the natural environment to the greatest degree practicable and provides appropriate buffering from streets and adjacent properties. Also, the Lower Keratoc Subarea Point Harbor Policy 6.1 says conservation subdivisions are valued over less compatible development types and even recommends density bonuses for conservation of additional open space. Of course, we're not proposing those, but this use does meet the guidance by providing the conservation subdivision development path.
I have no further questions, and I'm...
I have a question for, I guess, Mr. Bissell. Has any consideration be given with this development in regards to... And I know you live down that way. Well, when you go across, but on Saturday afternoons in the summertime, traffic can stop all the way to Grandy going south. And you have that additional traffic, people going to the dump, landfill, the recreational areas down there. If you have all that traffic trying to make a south turn, that's going to back up all the way to North Spot Road. People waiting to turn. I mean, because that traffic is not getting better.
I'll let the traffic engineer respond to some of that, but I will mention that the developer is proposing to provide private trash service so that we're not creating, you know, additional trips to the dump.
I have a question. Are any of the lots themselves... I saw on the plat where flood zone X is in that buffer between the industrial area and the lots, are any of the lots themselves in a flood zone X?
I'm going to have to go get my plans out in order to answer that question.
Flood zone X is the best. It does not require floods.
Yeah. And I'm sorry for not having that committed to the runway, but it looks like actually all of the lots are in flood zone X.
They are all in flood zone X? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for this witness?
I've got one. So, looking at the topographic map, I've looked at a few of those in my deck. And it looks like you've got a 12-foot ridge. I'm assuming the reading here is in feet, going kind of northeast from southwest by where the pond is located. And you're saying that you're going to have to bring in significant fill for the lots, most likely in that lower southeast side? With all the drainage... Or the storm retention pond located to the west, how much of that drainage in that 25-foot easement is going to be able to be captured without it just turning into a forever wet swamp right there between the road, where Spot Road is, and those lots, 41, 49, 31, and 30, trying to get water to run uphill?
Well, I'm going to let our stormwater engineer respond to that in more detail, but I'll tell you in generally what we'll do is excavate these lower areas that are to the north and east of the existing Tignatar ditch there and create and excavate that and use that suitable material to build up the lots that are farther to the north, leaving that ridge intact as much as possible to the west or to the east. And then, actually constructing a berm along the ditch that will keep the...
To retain that water.
To retain that water and keep it from directly flowing down to South Spot Road.
Kind of improvements are going to be made to that ditch on South Spot Road?
Because it's terrible now.
Yeah. The part that runs across the property will be excavated, and it'll be cleaned out. The slope's laid back, and a permanent maintenance is provided.
What about where that water flows to? I guess you will ask the drainage guy?
We'll be studying that as well.
Okay. Anyone have any further questions of Mr. Bissell? We proceed.
On that note, at this time, I'll call Mr. Andy Deal. Please state your name and address to the board.
Yes, my name is Andy Deal. My office is at 322 West Wilkinson Street in Kill Devil Hills. I'm also a resident of Keratoc County, Point Harbor.
Can you please describe your background and experience for the board?
Yes, I'm a professional engineer with Deal Engineering. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Virginia Tech. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. I have more than 32 years of experience as a civil engineer and have worked on development plans throughout eastern North Carolina and have studied, consulted on, and designed stormwater management plans for many projects in coastal environment.
At this time, I will tender Mr. Deal as an expert in the field of stormwater management. At this time, I will tender Mr. Deal as an expert in the field of stormwater management. Can you please explain for the board your role in this project?
Yes, I am consulting with the applicant team on the stormwater modeling and management plan for the Meadows subdivision.
And can you please describe the drainage in this area? There's already been some questions on that.
Sure. Is this on the screen? Yes. I've studied the drainage around the site. The land area that's bounded by US one fifty-eight, North Spot Road, South, and South Spot Road drains via the Tigmatar ditch. That Tigmatar ditch originates just north of Freedom Business Park and flows to the south, crossing Freedom Avenue, South Spot Road and Point Golf Club Drive before ultimately winding its way to a wetland outlet southeast of the Point Golf Golf Club and discharging to Currituck Sound. Along this route, the Tigmatar traverses the southwest corner of the subject property.
And how will the development manage stormwater?
Sure. The Tigmatar ditch is a relatively flat drainage way and flow within the ditch can be affected by wind tides during extreme storm events. In order to comprehensively account for offsite conditions and potential tailwater effects, I've been hired by South Spot to model the Tigmatar ditch in the entirety of its drainage area from the origin north of Freedom Business Park to a point south of the, of the Point Golf Course. The findings of this model will be reflected in the design and the construction drawings for the project.
And can you please describe that modeling methodology for the board?
Yes. The software that I use is the U S Environmental Protection Agency's Stormwater Management Model. It's referred to as EPA SWIM, Stormwater Management Model. It's a widely used simulation tool for analyzing and managing stormwater runoff, including both quantity and quality. The comprehensive modeling of the existing drainage way is far beyond the requirements of the Currituck County Stormwater Ordinance, which only requires an analysis of flows from the property. I'll then modify, so I, I will create this model of the existing conditions of the entire drainage basin. And then I'll modify that SWIM model, taking the existing conditions for our parcel out and putting in the proposed conditions for our parcel. Then I will compare the results of the two models, the existing and the proposed, and I'll modify the design of the drainage system for the project's onsite stormwater system with iterations of the pond and the swales and the storm sewer until the models balance.
And which peak flow mitigation targets will you use for that final design?
Sure. The, the balance that I'm looking for is actually a reduction on the ten-year two-hour storm. So that, I'm sorry, the ten-year twenty-four hour. Ten-year twenty-four hour rainfall event, in the post-construction condition, the design will reduce the ten-year twenty-four hour rainfall peak flow from the site to be equal to or less than the pre-construction two-year twenty-four hour rainfall event for a fully wooded site. This is a Currituck County requirement and it will reduce the flows, the peak flows in Tigmatar ditch for the ten-year rainfall event. Additionally, we are committed to doing, to also finding balance in the hundred-year twenty-four hour rainfall event. This is not a Currituck County requirement. In the post-construction condition, this design will not increase peak flow in the Tigmatar ditch as compared to the existing condition for a hundred-year twenty-four hour rainfall event.
And can you please describe the design that will allow the project to meet these targets?
In order to meet these targets, the project design will incorporate a large wet pond located in the southwest part of the property to capture and hold excess runoff from the developed site. Flow from the site will be collected via swales and storm sewer and, and conveyed to the proposed pond. Flow from the pond will be controlled via an orifice and weir structure, which discharges to Tigmatar ditch at controlled rates for the different rainfall events. There's also an area on the southeast of the Tigmatar ditch, which could be utilized for a pond to manage some flow within Tigmatar ditch. This is, will be evaluated in the modeling and if it's warranted to meet our targets, we will add another pond to the southwest of Tigmatar.
Mr. Deal, what does that look like? What, what, what would make that necessary?
The, we're part, the reason that, that we model the whole drainage system is when you get these flatter drainage systems, they're actually dynamic. They're interactive. If you, the, as you change things, you can have unexpected results. And that's why we want to look at everything. So it, what I will be analyzing is actually the total flow in Tigmatar ditch where it leaves the property and goes under South Spot Road. And so there may be a reason to add a pond to actually accept water from the ditch that's coming from offsite. And that's all if the dynamic analysis says, hey, we need some extra storage here.
And that would be more to protect the houses in the subdivision than?
This is all about, so protecting the houses in the subdivision is done through our design and grading and drainage and analysis of where elevations need to be set. This is all about protecting Tigmatar ditch and downstream properties.
Okay.
We have a responsibility through Currituck County's ordinance to reduce flows in Tigmatar ditch in the ten-year storm. And we are committing to also evaluating the hundred-year storm, the big storm, and making sure that we don't increase flows in Tigmatar ditch for that larger storm.
That would be more for the hundred year. That, that would be like.
It would likely be a situation, yes. And the, the model will tell us that.
Okay. All right.
And to, to add to that then, because the, it's so close to the sound and that drains into the sound.
Yes.
Will you, will your model reflect the way the sound's tidal was driven by, by wind? Because the Currituck Sound could be, you could walk across it with two inches of water or it could be, you know, twenty feet tall. Depends on the wind, whether it was driven, it's going to back that ditch up. And it could hold it backed up for days. I've seen that sound so high, it's, it won't flow at all.
Right.
And you're going to model that into your stormwater?
Yes. But I, I typically will look at two different versions of the hundred-year storm. One with the full FEMA hundred-year tailwater, which is FEMA's reflection of the, the, of the wind action in Currituck Sound. And I will do another analysis without that tailwater. And, you know, they, they tell me different pieces of information and we know that they're not necessarily going to happen at the same time. So we look at both of them.
So, Mr. Deal, if I'm, if I'm sitting here listening to you tonight, I could infer that you're saying you're going to improve the drainage for downstream? Or you're just going to say it's going to be the same downstream? Because I'm hearing where if you do what you say you're doing, you possibly could improve the downstream drainage? Or am I reading into something?
The, what we will do is reduce the flow in Tigmatar ditch when it, as it passes, leaves our property. So it's as it passes under South Spot Road for the ten-year rainfall event. For the hundred-year rainfall event, we are committed to not increasing the flows in Tigmatar ditch when it leaves our property. And I say that because there, there are so many different rainfall events that you can, you can look at. And so.
But actually.
In the more frequent large event, we will be reducing flows. In the massive event, we won't make them any worse.
Yeah, that's where I was going. So in the hundred-year event, if you plan for that, in the ten-year event, you're going to improve the drainage for the ten-year event, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's not just the rain, you know? As he mentioned, it's the wind-driven tides. Is your plan doing anything to address that?
The, the plan, the model takes those wind-driven tides into account in the analysis. It's, when you say to address that, there's not really anything that, you know, outside of a large public works project that can really address what happens when the wind builds up the, the, the tailwater, is the terminology that we use. But yes, we, we analyze with the tailwater and without the tailwater.
Thank you.
And so, just one last question.
Yes.
Does this use present any concerns regarding public health or safety?
In my professional opinion, the Meadows project will not endanger the public health or safety, nor will it injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands from a stormwater management perspective. The proposed modeling and stormwater management targets will ensure that properties in the area are not negatively impacted by the project's stormwater and will likely improve the drainage situation of other properties served by the Tigmatar ditch by detaining and controlling flow from the property, which is not happening today.
Those are my questions.
I got, I got one. Pretty much the same thing I asked Mr. Bissel. With having to increase the elevation on these lots to the southeast, you're, you're going to have to, to contain that water. He said you were going to berm it. You'd said something about an orifice and weir. Is that going to, is that going to be up to the, the west side where the flood retention pond is going to be?
Yeah. So classically, it's, this project naturally drains from northeast to southwest. We're honoring that. That's where the water ultimately needs to go. That's why the pond is down there. There will be a pond, there will be a berm on the west side of the pond. And all of our runoff from the interior of the site will be retained upstream of that berm. And that berm is really the separator between our water and Tigmatar ditch's water. And then we will control how rapidly our water flows from our site out to Tigmatar ditch.
Yeah, but what you just said was that it flows northeast to southwest. The, the concern I have is the, the southeastern stuff pushing that water vertically to the west up the side of Spot Road to Tigmatar ditch.
Within our development, all of that will be taken to our pond. And we will, we will be built up enough to take that to our pond. The water, there is a sliver of land that will be between that and, and South Spot Road. And what Mr. Bissel was saying is, is we will provide a, a design for that ditch that is updating that ditch, making sure it has positive slope culverts under our entrance so that we have positive drainage from the far end of our, our development back to Tigmatar ditch.
Anyone else? Can continue.
Thank you.
And Mr. Deal's affidavit is at tab five. Now I would like to call Mr. Andrew Top. Mr. Top, can you please state your name and address for the board?
Yes, Andrew Top. Office address is nine forty, Main Campus Drive, Suite 500 Raleigh, North Carolina, two seven six oh seven.
And what is your background and experience?
Transportation engineer at V H B. I have a bachelor's science degree from civil engineering from Virginia Tech and a master of civil engineering degree from N C State with a transportation focus. I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina, Virginia and South Carolina. I have twenty-five years of experience as a transportation engineer and have performed hundreds of traffic studies for public and private sector developments throughout North Carolina.
At this time, I would like to tender Mr. Top as an expert in the field of transportation engineering and traffic impacts.
Proceed.
Mr. Top, what is your role in this project?
I have evaluated the layout of the site plan and performed a T I A for the proposed development in order to testify regarding factor one, whether the use will endanger public health and safety from a traffic perspective. The T I A was performed December twenty twenty-four and studied fifty-six single-family homes. I compounded traffic based on traffic counts during summer to study these conditions as well.
And is your, is the analysis referenced in the agenda packet and at the binders at tab seven?
Yes.
At this time, I would move to admit that into evidence. Has the street network for the proposed development been designed to create a safe environment for vehicles and pedestrians?
Yes, the roadways and sidewalks have been laid out generally as shown in the master plan and will be in accordance with the approved right-of-way and pavement width characteristics using the D O T Complete Streets Planning Manual as a guide. Based on safety review of Highway one fifty-eight, Spot Road, site traffic is not expected to increase. Crash rates, site distance is appropriate at the site driveways. The analysis conform, confirms that the driveway on Highway one fifty-eight will be in safe location, will not impact upstream or downstream intersections. N C D O T has confirmed that this is an acceptable location as recommended by the T I A. A deceleration lane and a left and right turn lanes stacking are being provided at the access point.
In your expert opinion, are traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project mitigated by existing infrastructure and will not endanger the public safety?
Yes, we performed traffic counts in December twenty twenty-four. When schools were in session, the development is projected to generate forty-four a m. and fifty-eight p.m. peak hour trips. Based on the I T. Trip Generation Manual, eleventh edition, the level of service at the US one fifty-eight and Spot Road intersection is not expected to change significantly at the full buildout of the proposed development. All intersections studied are expected to operate acceptable levels during a typical weekday. The development's main point of access on Highway one fifty-eight will be the primary access point for these homes. The residents will not have much impact on existing intersections. The queuing for the left turn is less than forty feet, which will not negatively affect any upstream or downstream intersections. And N C D O T will allow this driveway location. This is confirmed by the N C D O T District Engineer in an email from my firm at tab eight in your binder.
Mr. Top.
Yes, sir.
If I could, Mr. Top, a quick question then. Did you recently state that you have reviewed all of the recent D O T studies of southern Currituck in the summertime and the congestion and all the traffic issues that have been involved with the county?
Yeah.
And you're familiar with the area though?
Yes, sir. So there's an automatic traffic recorder on the Wright Memorial Bridge that counts traffic every day. So three hundred sixty-five days a year. So we were able to request that data from N C D O T and get a good idea of what the traffic on one fifty-eight is south of Spot Road is every day of the year. So we could then take the count that we did in December where we notified, started on the study, and then we can project out and apply a ratio to project summer conditions for an August count that we typically use in, in the traffic profession as a, as a common analysis point for coastal.
You didn't use actual August counts from you. You said you used December and you took an average or something?
Yes, sir.
So you didn't use the actual August counts from down there?
We used the August twenty twenty-three counts from, that was, that was the latest data that was available to us. And then we applied a ratio to project out summer traffic.
Okay.
So you compounded the traffic.
Yeah, we, we increased it by a one point five three factor based on the data from twenty twenty-three.
Did your traffic count in December of twenty twenty-four include a Saturday or a Sunday by chance?
It was weekday conditions.
So it was, it was for a whole week?
No, it was just on a weekday count.
So it didn't capture the, the traffic to the dump, for example, that's on South Spot Road on a Saturday? It didn't capture that?
But we analyzed the weekday conditions, which is very common for, for T I As in this area.
Is that the accepted standard for N C D O T?
I have a question. How did you interpolate to get from December to July on South Spot Road? What, what's the formulation you use to figure that number?
Sure. Good question. So it's a ratio of looking at the twenty-four, the, the year's worth of data and then applying that ratio of the August count divided by the December count, apply that ratio to the actual count that we got in twenty twenty-four.
How close was that to the actual August count?
With that projection, it, it was, you know, spot on with the, with the August count.
Exactly?
No, it's a, not exactly, but it's a, it's a, it's on within a level range.
To clarify and put a bet on this, you took the traffic counts during a weekday in December, when schools were in session. That is the typical practice for N C D O T, correct?
Yes.
And then you use the data, as you explained, on the Wright Memorial Bridge, those actual counts, the summer months. And then you took that data that you actually found, counting the, the traffic, got a, a ratio and increased the, the traffic. And that's what you studied to make your recommendations.
In twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
Twenty twenty-three, you said.
And that didn't include Saturdays either?
The, well, the year's worth of data included.
So from August of twenty twenty-three included Saturday data as well?
That's right.
Okay.
Was there a, was there a reason Wednesday was picked? Just random day of the week?
We typically count either Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Often travels affected Mondays and Fridays. We often, in, in the engineering profession, always count midweek.
But Tuesdays are trash.
My other question is if we have, I mean, if N C D O T has that thing and it's been there for how long, why not just use the actual data from an August? Why not just use the actual data from an August?
Well, it's only for Route 158, so we, we wanted to get the turning them accounted Spot Road as well so we can identify the ones turning in and out of Spot Road.
Okay, I got you.
Yep.
I have a question about the, the level of service specifically on Spot Road. Has there been any thought? You've got the access or the access one, which is Pine Brook Lane, and that has both a left turn capability and a right turn capability. And then 1,500 feet to the south, you've got South Spot Road, which also has a left turn capability and a right turn capability. I'm just wondering if any thought had been put to having Pine Brook Lane as a right exit only, just to improve the level of service on South Spot Road? If you had to go south and exit out, that would leave more people, in my mind, exiting north or west on Highway 158 out of Pine Brook Lane?
We, we, just the design of the site, the presence of the turn lanes and the alignment of the site, we sent most traffic out and we expect most traffic to go out onto 158 directly. So that's where we sent most traffic. So we do have it as a full access of both driveways, but most of the traffic, as others have mentioned, will, will exit directly onto 158.
So you don't foresee people heading to the beach or Dare County or either southern, southern Currituck to exit out South Spot Road? You think most will exit south or east on 158 out Pine Brook Lane?
Yep, I, I believe most traffic will exit even when they're heading to the south. If they're coming from the north, certainly, but if they're exiting to the south, we think they would just exit out at the main driveway onto 158 directly.
I mean, just out of curiosity, it seems like a lot of the lots, it would be a shorter trip out without the, well, I guess it's about the same distance, never mind. I'll take that back.
Based on our estimate, it's a very similar distance. And if you exit at the direct, at the main driveway, you know, it's just this traffic from the site, so it's exclusive use, it's less delay. They can just have a separate left and right turn lane. I think they can make that turn a lot easier from the main driveway.
And, and that would be because of the site, the, able to see better?
Well, there's, you know, there's no, there's no existing vehicle trips. It would be 100% site traffic exiting, not any golf, any other traffic. So they can avoid all that traffic by just exiting through their own driveway without competing with any other vehicles.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Church on Sunday.
I just have one last question. Will the improvements in streets allow safe and efficient access for fire, rescue, and law enforcement? That's my last question. If there's no further questions from the board, Mr. Top's affidavit is at tab six. If there's no further questions, I will excuse him. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Hunter Howell. Mr. Howell, please state your name and address for the board.
Yes, my name is Hunter Howell and my office address is 412 East Chad Street, Cary, North Carolina, 27511.
And can you please explain your background and experience for the board?
Yes, I'm a professional real estate appraiser and I'm employed by Paramount Commercial Appraisers. I'm licensed as a state-certified general appraisal appraiser in the state of North Carolina and a member of the Appraisal Institute as a practicing affiliate. I have been appraising properties throughout North Carolina for over 10 years. And I've also testified as an expert in numerous quad judicial hearings before this county as well as other jurisdictions addressing the same or similar factors that I'm addressing here tonight.
At this time, I would like to tender, Mr. Howell is an expert in the field of real property appraisal, impacts real property in harmony with the surrounding properties?
Proceed.
Can you please explain your role in this project?
Yes, I was engaged to study the impacts of the project to the value of the adjoining property and whether the project is in harmony with the surrounding areas.
Could you please explain how you evaluated those factors?
Yes, similar to other testimonies I've offered this board, I prepared a report in which I analyzed the effects of the proposed development on the surrounding areas.
Is this the report you prepared at tab 10 of the binders?
Yes, it is.
And how did you evaluate the impacts of this use on adjoining or budding land?
So the report analyzed the surrounding land uses and residential values over the previous three years to determine the market demographics and trends. I also looked at other developments in comparable locations in order to determine the effects of these developments in the area in which they're located. This method is called a matched paired analysis. The report analyzed a one, three, and five mile radius, but gave the most weight to the statistics within a three mile radius. I looked at the population, housing supply, renter versus owner occupied statistics, and household income data over the last 10 years with projections over the next five years. This data is on page three of the report. The population within a three mile radius is expected to grow annually by 2.7% over the next five years. The housing supply is also expected to increase at this same rate. This indicates a strong and healthy market that needs additional housing to accommodate population growth. We also analyzed the housing inventory and prices as well, as well as average days on the market over the last three years. The analysis shows that over the past five years in the Currituck County market, home prices have been increasing while average days on the market have been declining. These trends indicate a strong residential market in need of additional housing. As this area's population continues to grow, existing home prices will continue to rise. And as a result of increasing home values, available vacant land in the area will also increase as new developments are doing well and developers will need to fill the void for additional housing options.
Did you analyze how the proposed development is anticipated to impact surrounding property?
Yes, there's a generally a positive impact to surrounding properties with the type of development proposed. As new residential developments come to areas, it enhances the surrounding areas positively in terms of property values. Increasing home values increase the value of available vacant land as these developers look to fill the void for additional housing options. This has been seen in several instances across the eastern part of the state. We looked at three large residential subdivisions with master plans in other formerly rural areas and found that they tend to increase adjacent land values. This is on page nine of the report. The proposed development is bordered by single-family residential properties to the south and east, vacant land and a mobile home park to the west, and industrial uses to the north. Typically, these developments are clustered beside each other along less traveled corridors to keep a harmony of use. Larger commercial developments are typically located a short distance away along higher traffic corridors, limiting the number of vehicles passing the residential development areas. Based on the proposed density of the development and these tendencies, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or budding lands.
And in your opinion, is the proposed development in harmony with the land where it is located?
Yes, we looked at similar developments in the immediate area to determine if this project is cohesive with the development pattern. This is on page five of the report. We identified six similar subdivisions in the area recently developed or approved and under construction. Based on these developments, we identified this project is cohesive and in harmony with the surrounding area and uses. Based on the proposed density of the development, there are no negative impacts to adjacent properties or the general neighborhood. And therefore, based on my analysis and report, I found that the proposed use will not injure the value of adjoining and abutting lands and will be in harmony with the surrounding areas.
Now, one quick follow-up question. You heard Mr. Bissell testify earlier about the buffers, the proposed buffers. Are those typical for residential development at this time?
Yes, they are very typical and in some instances greater in areas.
Than what you've seen.
Than what would be typical for a residential subdivision.
I have no further questions for Mr. Howell. If any of the board members have questions, at this time, I tender him to.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In doing your analysis, what type of homes are you proposing that's going to be built on this in order for you to do an analysis? What's going to be the price point and type of homes that the developer is proposing?
That's a good question, but for this type of analysis, we more look at the type of development that's going in there versus the type of homes that are being built. So we look more at the density, and with this being at that 0.91 and the comparable developments that we have found throughout the surrounding areas of Currituck, it is right there in that range, and it has a very similar kind of dynamic to other, to other developments.
So the, the price point of a house has no effect on whether it affects surrounding properties?
I mean, it does to an extent, but it's going to be of a similar high, not high level, but a, a, a same, similar quality to other new subdivisions. That's why we look at under construction and, and things like that because they're going to be of new homes. They typically are going to be of a slightly higher quality of what might be existing currently beside it, so they will at least be up to that standard or of similar.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I was just gonna say, I mean, so you're looking at, obviously on a 25,000 square foot lot, you know, they're not going to be able to build a so big of a house. So something like a, probably a three to four bedroom, 1,800 to 2,200 square foot, somewhere in that?
I would expect that to be pretty typical, but I think the developer will be able to answer that question better in, in terms of what the exact style will be of the, the homes within that development.
All right. Anyone else? All right.
Thank you.
We can hold him as needed. Okay, really quickly, last factor we want to cover this evening is factor four, adequate public schools. And at this time, I'm going to call Ms. Jenny Turner just for a few questions based on the, the staff report, if you would.
I just have my copy of this.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect. Ms. Turner, we just need to give the evidence and the record. Can you please state your name and address for the board?
Jenny Turner, 104 North River Beach Lane, Jarvisburg.
And what is your role for the county?
Assistant Planning Director.
And did you oversee the county staff's preparation for, for this hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Did you prepare the staff report?
Yes.
Yes. As a part of the preparation for this case, did staff investigate current capacity in Currituck County Public Schools?
Yes.
And do you recognize this, this chart shown on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, is this an excerpt from the staff report?
It is, yes.
Okay, and is this chart counted on page three of the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, and where are the students generated from this development anticipated to attend school?
Jarvisburg Elementary, Currituck Middle, and the high schools.
And how many element, okay, on page two of the staff report, it states Jarvisburg Elementary has available capacity to serve the additional 14 elementary school, elementary students generated by this development. And Currituck Middle has available capacity to serve the four additional students generated by this development. And high schools in the county have available capacity to serve the seven additional students generated by this development. Do you, do you see that on the staff report?
I do, yes.
Okay. Did staff base this statement on, on this chart?
Correct, based on the actual capacities and the Tischler study generation.
And looking at the bottom row, according to this chart, what is the percentage of actual capacity of Currituck High for the current school year?
Currituck High, 86%.
Yep. And based on that percentage, staff concluded that there is available public school capacity at Currituck High.
Correct, for this project, yes.
And let's look at the row above. According to the chart, what is the percentage of actual capacity of Currituck Middle for the current, current school year?
80%.
And based on that percentage, there is available public school capacity for the four middle school students generated, correct?
Yes.
Okay, according to this chart, what is the percentage of actual capacity of Jarvisburg Elementary for the current school year?
76%.
And based on that percentage, there is available public school capacity for those, those 14 elementary school students generated by this use, correct?
Yes.
So based on the calculation staff has performed, the county has public school capacity to accommodate these 25 students as stated in the staff report?
Yes.
And that's in place today?
Yes.
Okay. So the addition of these students will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public schools?
Yes, based on this data.
Okay. And those are all the questions I have for Ms. Turner.
Can I ask Ms. Turner a question? The committed capacity is at 92%. Does that include the current projects that are already added books that have not built out yet?
That includes projects that have some level of approval, but that have not been built, yes, since the end.
But they're not, they're not actually included in the actual capacity yet.
Correct.
So those could come onboard along with this and really cause that actual capacity to jump extremely high.
They could, yes.
Okay, which at 92% committed capacity, these additional students could move that up closer to 98% probably.
I'm not sure what the percentage is. I would need to look at that.
But it probably would increase that committed capacity up there.
In the elementary school, 14 students. I'm not sure what percentage of, of the, the total that is.
But then if you look at the high school, the high school's committed capacity based on those already projects on the books is 105%.
Correct.
Does not include this project here, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that being stated, we still have a lot of individual lots being built, like one acres individually, farmlands going up and down the cat that are not, are not part of a subdivision, correct? That could add students, could potentially add students.
That aren't reflected in committed capacity, that's correct.
Thank you, that's all I needed to know.
I'm sorry, the committed capacity, does that include all permitted, homes that are permitted that anybody could build in the county?
It includes subdivisions and projects that have a certain level of zoning approval.
That have zoning.
That could be.
That have zoning, okay. And just to answer these questions, do you, I know there were some questions about the, the numbers in the investigation that you did, and did you send me some information about the, the numbers of the students at the schools?
Yes, I sent you the current school capacities information.
Okay, and how many available seats are there for the elementary, middle, and high schools?
Total?
Yes.
Let's see, Griggs, Jarvisburg, let's see.
And the middle?
Middle. Well, that's both, so 108 for the Currituck Middle School and the high schools is 200.
In the past, the, the county has typically looked at actual capacity and number of seats available, and so this development has 25, generates 25 students. At this time, I'll ask that the presentation, the staff report, agenda, and all attachments, the affidavits summarizing the witnesses' testimony and the video and audio recordings of this meeting be admitted into the record. And I'll summarize our evidence here and then revisit if any contrary, competent evidence is present.
Ma'am, I still have a question.
Yeah.
I asked earlier about the size of the homes and the price point that is being proposed. Can I get that information from the developer, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, you can.
And I have some questions.
I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
Can you please state your name and address for the board?
Peter Kaufman, 1771 Ringling Boulevard.
And can you please state your role in this project?
So I'm the project developer.
And I know they have some questions.
Yeah, I, I was curious about the typical size of the home that you plan on building and price point, and I know you can't tell me exactly, but just kind of a, a broad brush stroke of what you're looking at.
Yeah, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to interrupt, but was this witness sworn in?
Yes, I was.
Okay, just double checking. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we looked at this and based on the size of the lots, the setbacks, the drain fields, plus the market, the area, I think if you look at Kilmarlick, the prices that are going in Kilmarlick would probably be the high end of what we're going to offer at, so I think it's safe to say 1,800 to 2,200 and probably an average of, they probably end up selling at about 400,000.
Okay.
And what amenities, we've, we've heard about the sidewalks, which is on both sides of the street, from my understanding, except for the walkway to the mailboxes. What other amenities will make this feel like home for somebody and not just a place to drop their head?
Well, we, we have the, the pond that's going to be wet at all times, so we're going to have a walking trail around the pond.
Okay.
And the one thing I also wanted to point, I don't know if it was brought up, but we're not going to be making trips to the, to the waste station.
Landfill.
The landfill.
Yeah.
So we're going to have our own dumpsters on site, so there won't be any traffic turning left onto Spot Road to take the trash out. It'll, it'll stay on site, so.
Any thoughts for? Any thoughts for things like a dog park, any of those in the plan? You've mentioned a walking trail around the pond.
Yeah, we did talk about it, well, we've been talking internally about a dog run for that, try to keep that, that area. It really, it's going to depend on what we have to do with the stormwater pond that's on the other side of the ditch.
All right.
Or the trash collection happen, because you got.
I'm sorry?
I can get, well, yeah, I guess. Okay, never mind.
Okay.
Chair, one more.
Has, has the, a builder been determined? Will this be a local builder or a national builder?
We, we, we do our own building right now, so we could be doing it ourselves, but we're doing, we're doing Jarvis Landing right now. Anybody's interested?
That's all my questions.
Yeah. Anyone else have a question? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Then I'm going to just briefly summarize the evidence and, you know, if we need to revisit anything, we can. We provided competent material and substantial evidence on each of these four required factors. As to factor one, the use permit will not endanger public's health or safety. Mr. Bissell offered expert testimony that the proposed use meets all applicable UDO provisions, and that the design will not endanger the public health or safety. Mr. Deal offered expert testimony as to the significant stormwater management improvements, modeling and improvements that are being designed appropriately mitigate any impacts of this development on drainage, and that these improvements should have a benefit to the surrounding area. Mr. Top testified that access in the internal street and sidewalk network had been designed to mitigate any traffic congestion reasonably expected from this development and to facilitate the safe and efficient movement of emergency services and law enforcement with respect to factor two. Mr. Howell offered expert testimony that the proposed uses and plans are expected to benefit adjoining properties, will not adversely affect its value, and that the proposed residential uses are in harmony with the surrounding area and pattern of development. With respect to factor three, Mr. Bissell cited portions of the zoning ordinance where the, and the land use plan that the, the project is in conformance with, and this was, these policies were also mentioned in the staff report. With respect to factor four, Ms. Turner explained in the staff report that, and confirmed that elementary, middle, and high schools have the capacity to handle these 25 students, which conforms with UDO 2.4.6 and 6.6. So we've met our burden to produce competent material, expert testimony, substantial evidence on each of these four factors, and North Carolina requires, requires the issuance of the permit approval tonight. We'll remain available for questions, and we reserve the right to, to cross-examine any witnesses and make closing remarks at the conclusion of evidence. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
May, may I ask a question, just for clarification?
Yes.
Mr. Bissell, I believe earlier said there would be private trash pickup, and then Mr. Kaufman just stated that there would be dumpsters on site. I'd like to get some clarification on what that meant exactly, just with respect to the plan, and was that supposed to be some, like, was that, was that an infrastructure, was there a place that he was going to put dumpsters?
That's kind of where I, that's kind of where my question was going.
Two different descriptions.
Is.
Is it curbside?
Is it curbside pickup, or is it going to be collection?
You take your trash.
Of a dumpster.
This is preliminary plan.
We'll do either, whatever they.
It is preliminary. Yeah, we still got another, they've got to come, if they get approval tonight, they've got to come back with all the drainage data.
It's just a preliminary.
And all the everything to prove that they're doing what they said they're going to do.
And that's an administrative review, so that's a technical review committee review, that doesn't come back to you.
It will not come back to us.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, because a lot of the site is open space and there's road, right, and then there's lots. Dumpster storage is not an approved open space use that I, that I'm seeing in the ordinance, so I just want to make that clear. I don't know if that's going to be some sort of condition of approval, I'd just like it to be clear so staff knows what to expect.
Would it be clear if it was a condition of approval? Would it make it clear to TRC?
It depends on, depends on how the, what the condition is.
So we can't put dumpsters in.
What was he saying, like, curbside?
Is that a condition that the applicant was offering as part of?
He's, he's coming forward, he's going to tell us what he plans to do right now.
Yeah.
So Jenny, we have, we didn't include any of the open space along the three parcels going out to the highway?
Sure, I think it is actually on the plat.
I don't think that's on the calculation of open space, although we show it as open space, it's not part of the required.
It's not part of required open space, but you are proposing it to be open space on your plat, that's before the board tonight.
So putting, I think it would be convenient to put a dumpster pad there. It's not, we're not losing any open space by doing it, and it would be convenient for our residents as they leave to drop off the trash.
Excuse me.
If we can't do that, we will have pickup, curbside pickup from that.
I think what Ms. Turner was saying is you have, even though it's not required, you have submitted as open space, so you can't put that in open space, so it would have to be curbside pickup, I believe is what you're saying.
It just can't be included in the calculation.
You don't have an option right now, you have one option, curbside.
He has any.
As is presented tonight.
It's definitely not something that we've discussed and, or reviewed through the process, so it'd be difficult for me to say something other than curbside right, side right now in this hearing.
Right now, it was presented as curbside zip.
Was curbside presented as a part of it, or do they still have the option to use the county recycling center?
They, tonight, the applicants mentioned curbside during their testimony.
Okay, but that wasn't a part of the plan that you reviewed at all?
Correct.
Okay.
It came back, the comments from the community about traffic on Spot Road were, we took those to heart, and it's our intention to provide trash pickup so that our residents will not have to go onto Spot Road and increase that traffic.
Just so you know, that's what you have to do based on what you presented us, because you can't put dumpsters in open space.
Even if it's open space, that is not part of our calculation.
Your plat labels it as open space.
Your plat, what you, what we're looking at is a plat of open space, you cannot put a dumpster there.
Okay, well, then we'll do curbside.
That's what we're basing our decision on tonight.
All right, base it on curbside pickup.
At this time, I'm going to open the public comment. First person we have signed up is Bobby Hanny. I ask you, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Bobby Hanny, 102 Orchard Lane. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. First and foremost, I want to be clear, I'm not against the development of this property. It's landowner's right to develop it, all we ask is that they be a good neighbor. I do have some concerns. First, flooding. Forty acres directly south of this property that have flooded severely three times over the last 12 years, three times over the last 12 years, creating at least six inches of water in the bottom of my house, and twice not as severe. This is not a 10-year storm. These are 100-year storms, three times in the last 12 years. Something's got to give. I did send pictures, they're not admissible today. Many of you are already aware of this situation. This is an issue I've been working through the previous staff here at Currituck County that have left, so those, those issues continue. I urge you to have this issue resolved before any development is approved. 12 residents and 40 acres are greatly impacted by the flooding that is being caused by Freedom Park. This is not an issue with, what's the name of this property, I apologize?
The Meadows.
The Meadows? This is not a Meadows issue, this is a Freedom Park issue. None of that water has been addressed tonight, so that water's going to keep coming our direction. So it isn't so much incumbent upon these folks, but incumbent that we fix this bigger issue before we move forward. The water that comes onto our, onto our 40-acre lot takes weeks to subside. It doesn't come in one day and go out the next. So what does that cause? That causes fish kills, turtle kills, kills waterfowl, and creates raw sewage. They say no detriment to the public, to public health, but for two weeks at a time, we'll have literally floating raw sewage in our yard. That's a detriment to public health. The road on South Spot increases traffic, pedestrians, golf carts, bikes, et cetera. No one's talked about that, about that traffic. December traffic study, there's no way you can extrapolate a December traffic study to 400 golfers at the Point Golf Course, on top of the people going down to the water, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Not checking it on weekends, it may be the, the industry standard, but that's not, that's not, uh, uh, South Currituck standards, because we're a tourist destination, and all of our traffic happens on the weekends. We talked about the buffer. Way larger buffer on the industrial side than there, than there is on the residential side of Spot Road. You know, in keeping with our surroundings, in keeping with our environment, I'm requesting that we put 100-foot buffer on South Spot Road, undisturbed, meaning what's there has to stay there, because that's our buffer. If they completely wipe that out and just put a few trees here and there, that's not a buffer, and it would take years or decades for it to grow up. I want you to please consider the issues we have so we can keep our rural environment and move forward as good neighbors. I have a couple, a couple of things that I, that I, questions. They talked about road improvements on Currituck Highway with the turn lanes, but no improvements for South Spot Road. With the amount of traffic that's going to try to get out of Spot Road, are there any type of, uh, 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 turn lanes, ingress or egress lanes on South Spot, coming off of South Spot Road? It talks about the standards that we have to meet, the uniqueness and the character. Policy 1.1, that it will keep in the natural environment and rural character. 56 houses, 15 feet apart, is not rural character. Proposed trash on site, you know, now they're talking about waste management, so as a taxpayer of Currituck County, when you pay your taxes, you get a pass to go to the dump. So because they get rural pickup, does that preclude them from being able to use the dump or no? Can anyone answer that question?
You got a pass, you can go to the dump.
If you got a pass, you can go to the dump. And when you pay your taxes, you're going to, you're going to get a pass. Oh, yeah. That's what's going to happen.
They're not going to wait for trash pickup, we're going to the dump.
The stormwater engineer talked about flooding and how it would not impact our, our health and safety. Again, polluted ponds, bad wells, polluted neighbors, you know, all their, all of their yards from, from septic and sewage. The house price points, I urge you to make sure that they, that you have some type of documentation, from what I heard, and I don't think they will, I think they're going to be upstanding folks, but there's nothing precluding them from going in there, putting in 56 trailers. Nothing in any document that I've seen precludes them from doing that. They might not develop it, they might sell this property after they get, get approval to, to, to develop it. We don't know what the future's going to hold with the future developer, or what they're going to put in there. So if it isn't in documentation, it needs to be in documentation. Again, we did not address South Spot Road, we did not address the traffic on there. There have been multiple accidents, there was a death right outside of my street a couple of years ago. Putting kids, walking, scooters, bikes, golf carts on South Spot Road is, is, is going to be catastrophic to us. The traffic there will be unbearable, because you'll have to go around the person on the bike, you'll have to go around the person on the scooter, and the golf carts. I urge you to take a look at all these issues before you approve this, this permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to remind the board that any lay witness is, the evidence to consider is only what he testified to as facts and of what he had personal knowledge of. So I just want to remind the board of that.
All right. Next is Roger Sargent.
Bobby's did it all, I don't need to say anything else. My property joins the Florida Development Act. I would like to have 12 houses in your backyard.
Yeah.
I'll hear them up here.
You need to come to the.
Can I come with him?
Come on.
Sure.
Tell them how the average lot size on Spot is six acres.
Yeah, almost 10 acres there, you know, we own, they're going to put 12 houses right behind my house. What's, what's the buffer zone going to be there?
Give you, give me name and address.
Roger Sargent, 416 North Spot Road.
Yes, sir.
Sharon Sargent, 416 North Spot Road.
Okay.
So we do, but probably our brother and us, majority of what is going to be behind the meadows.
Right.
There's a large pond out there that is really a concern about children coming through those woods, that little buffer, to fish, to play, to go swimming, and drown, get in trouble, get bit by a snake.
Yeah.
And we help, we can put up no trespassing signs, kids can't read.
No.
They don't understand that, that's one of my main concerns, plus just the fact that, as Bobby spoke, all the traffic, people will be going to the dump, I've lived there all my life.
Yeah.
And it's been a, a pleasure and an enjoyment.
All our family is there.
And I've watched it grow, from homes being built around us. There's lots of land that individuals can buy and build a nice home, you know, in the area, without bombarding us with two or 100-plus people that will be coming in to these 57 houses. So we really hope that you look at the big picture, and the school thing, how can they save four children?
Seven children, yeah.
And, or seven from 54 homes. I mean, in our neighborhood alone, there's like 20 children in six houses.
Yeah.
That go to the local schools, and no fire department manned, no EMS manned, it's just a real big concern. It's not what we ever expected to happen.
To a quiet neighborhood like us, you know, family oriented.
So that's all we like to say, we hope that you decide not to approve it.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I get backsies?
Angie Walker?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I thought I was signing up just to say I was here. I opposed it, though. Go.
All right.
Wrong list.
Danan Dawson?
That's me, I wasn't trying to sign up, but I will get up there for a minute anyway.
Were you sworn in?
Not.
Okay.
Commented this time.
Sarah Hahn?
Oh, no, we, wrong list.
Wrong list.
Yeah. You can swear me in now, but it's cool.
Uh, John Ward?
Same boat.
Corey Davies?
Same as them.
Bryce?
Someone moved the chute.
Same.
So they didn't get sworn in? Is that the part?
They're on the wrong list.
Wrong favorite, wrong list.
Confusion with the lists.
All right, David Parker? Please give your name and address for the record, sir.
David Parker, 398 North Spot Road, my property, I joined this property, they want to develop. I've got a few issues, one thing is they talk about they're going to get county water, well, how about that? With all that septic going in the ground, I'm on well water, not that far from it. My mother paid for a county water tap 40 years ago, she hadn't seen it yet, of course, she's then gone, rest her soul, but we were wondering about how they're going to get county water, and nobody's offered it through the whole road. Number two, you know, I'm worried about the septic, it's a lot of septic water going in the ground in that small area. Then they got their ditches and all they're going to do to drainage, what, you know, what if it gets in there on the flood? So it'll, it'll, you know, it'll mess up all the water. And the school buses, I mean, my granddaughter rides the bus now, and they have problems getting enough bus drivers to get the kids that's there now, not much less than much more coming in the neighborhood. So we worried about that. And the traffic, you got the dump, got golf course, got the rural center that's Currituck County, and we all hold big events there, there's a lot of traffic on Spot Road. We've got to consider that on weekends. And of course, the summer traffic coming down, you know, pretty soon, it's all week, not just weekends, and I have to get in and out of that road, and sometimes I sit there a while. And if you've got a bunch more people wanting to get out at the same time, it's going to even be worse. be worse. So, I mean, I just want you to take that consideration. I've been living there all my life. And I just don't think we need that much development, that small area, in, you know, that close to us and all of us around there, if you look, we're flooded out pretty good. But that's a lot of houses in one little area. And I don't know if they know, but I've seen the water come all the way up to Land Road more than once. And that's, if it, if it does it with all that going on, then we're gonna be flooded out pretty bad in the area. So I just don't think we need it. I oppose it.
All right. Thank you. Joe Zwanik?
My name's Joe Zwanik and I own the property adjacent to this subdivision, uh, I'm between that and the cemetery. And I haven't heard, heard a word said in here tonight. So I'm gonna, but Rafi, who lives, a resident of Spot, speak for me because if you say anything, I don't hear it. But anyway, I fail to see where this is gonna be in keeping with the rural character of the, of the community. I've lived in Spot 77 years.
Rafi?
Thank you. Rafael Winyarek, 8388 Carrot Lake Highway. Again, as, as Joe Zwanik has indicated, I'm gonna speak on his behalf. We talked about these items prior to the meeting. We, we thought it would be best that, that I, I jump in. If you could pull up the plat, I would appreciate it. And of course, Mr. Chairman, councilors, good evening. Um...
Is the eye control there?
Yes. Yeah, I think this is the best one, really. So I really would like to focus on the impact, really, because that's, that's really easy to explain. It doesn't entail much of an opinion. As Joe's mentioned, he owns the property here, the nine acres directly adjoining to the property. I think it's good news that there will be a berm separating the properties together to prevent, um, a water intrusion. The water is a significant issue that we have concern with, or Joe has concern with. The grading of the Tigmatar ditch has seen better days, as, as you probably have noticed by going to the site, the water backs up constantly. And it's, it's really tough to say at this moment what will exactly happen with, with the controlled release of the water from the BMP and overflow to the ditch. However, we suspect that there will be water traveling into the adjoining nine acres impacting its value. As you know, in the Unified Development Ordinance for Single Families Residential Subdivisions, the, the specific regulation regarding the conservation subdivisions requires specific setback from agricultural land, which this parcel is zoned as, as well as the, the parcels on the right side, on the eastern side. I, I believe that setback is 50 feet. And currently, it looks like some of these, these, especially one of the lots would be within that setback and, um, and, and the violation potentially of that policy. I think another item that's concerning to Joe as an adjoining property owner is the conservation land that will be there in the corner where, um, I, I guess it's the both sides here. It is our understanding that setbacks from conservation land also have certain requirements. I think the way we read the, the code is that the minimum setback from conservation land is 25 feet, which would impact the opportunities to really what can be built on potential lots or, or on this land. So there's an impact on the value of this property as we believe it is, in at least two ways. And it's, of course, not to, it, it should be mentioned that we share all the other concerns, the traffic, the water table quality as a result of the septic tanks, the use of the dump and so forth. I don't need to echo those, they were repeated here many times. So I hope I provided you with some specifics that, that potentially you can consider as part of evidence, as they do have, in my, in our opinions, impact on the property value that's adjoining the meadows. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person I have sign up that was sworn in, other than... Yes, sir.
My apologies, so there's a couple of points I didn't bring up. We talked about all the water flowing and getting to South Spot Road. We never talked about going under South Spot Road. What are we gonna do to address that, that backup? And when it gets under South Spot Road and it gets backed up to the Point Road, what are we doing to address that backup? Because that's where our flooding comes from. It comes from these ditches backing up, then backing onto our 40 acres. That's where it's all coming from. So we have not addressed that at all. I urge you to have that addressed and have that resolved before, before you pass this project. I think it's extremely important and, um, I, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yeah, Mr. Deal, can you address the, um, issue of the culverts? That is something we did not discuss. And your plan is that addressing the culverts?
The, the crossings that we're talking about are downstream of this property. And so the responsibility for this property is to, it, is to not increase flow in the ditch. It's not to fix an existing problem downstream from the property. The 10-year, two-year requirement will help because we are reducing flows, but the... This probably had a more downstream. The, the culverts under, um, the culvert under Spot Road and the culverts that carry water at the point, there's actually a couple of them, one that goes under a driveway and then goes, goes under the point. They are included in the work that I'm doing in terms of the analysis and the stormwater modeling. So one benefit to what we're doing here is there is going to be an engineering document created that's going to identify what's actually happening at those locations and will make it so that the county or the community or DOT can do upgrades there without having to do a $20,000 stormwater study to model the whole ditch to understand what would be the improvements that would work there. But this is off-site downstream of the property and it's not the responsibility in, in the rules or in, in general engineering practice when developing a property to go and fix all of the, all of the problems that may exist away from the property.
And Mr. Deal, if, if you in your modeling, uh, this particular piece of property find that there is an inflow of water from Freedom Park into this area, how will you address that? If it's not just the water from this subdivision, if there's water coming from storms from the Freedom Park that we've heard about, how will you address that in addition to the problems that you, or the issues that you address here?
The responsibilities for, for stormwater that we're getting into land law a little bit here, if there is water that normally flows across your property, uh, from a higher property, then your responsibility is to accommodate that water. It's to basically not create a dam that will then dam up the, the water onto an adjoining property. As part of what we're doing, we're certainly going to analyze what the drainage patterns are along that northern property line and make sure that our work isn't going to create a, a dead spot up there that, that's gonna hold water and, and create a, a wetland or something like that.
So you, you would be accepting some of the runoff that we've heard about from that Freedom Park, your modeling would be accepting that?
The model is going to account for it.
Okay.
The design is not, it, it's, in terms of grades and physical, um, physical flows, it's, I do not anticipate that we will be accepting water from Freedom Park into our stormwater management system, into our ponds. But we're not allowed to strand it up there either. We would have to bring it past our, our development.
Into your ditches and down to your pond?
Not into our pond. If, if there's stranded water there, we would be, create a conveyance along the, the northern part of our property to carry that water past our pond. Now, in doing this...
Okay.
In doing this, one of the things that I'm analyzing is what impact that has on Tigmatar Ditch. If I'm, if I'm delivering the water faster now to Tigmatar Ditch than it was going before, I have to account for that.
And that's where that other pond would come into play?
That's one of the, one of the places that the other pond could come into play, yes.
Where would the other pond be?
It's, the, the, the place that we identified is, is, are we up on the screen? The, the graphic?
Yeah.
To, to the south?
You use the mouse. I will see the mouse.
Okay. This area of open space right here. Now, obviously, we can't really bring flow from our development into a pond here. And so that's why we, we will manage our property on this side of Tigmatar Creek. But if the dynamics of the system, again, because we're, we're looking at everything, if the dynamics of the system tell us that we really need to create some more storage for Tigmatar over here, then we will do that.
Where on this graphic is the current Tigmatar? Where does that?
Uh, that is, that is this white...
Okay.
...area coming down right there. And that's a little wetland that's off of it right there. And you can see the crossing under Spot Road there and then it continues south.
And it goes into the sound where?
It goes through the point, continues, uh, continues to the south through the point. It runs behind a, the, the developed and, and developing lots there in the edge of the woods and then turns. It eventually goes in pretty close to the south side of the Point Golf Course. But it does go like through the course itself and then through the woods for a distance and then turns and goes over.
The, um... The Tigmatar ditch, and like where you're saying where it goes from, where you turn on Point Club Drive, that ditch that runs behind the par three on the road, that you can see the water park across, then it goes across 16. I know when it rains a lot, 16 at the point, which is right by the Tigmatar ditch, I don't know if you're a golfer or not, but like that's always one of the wettest spots right there and it's always car, I mean, like, so like, is that something, if was approved, your people would have issues with doing improvements to the Tigmatar ditch because that is an area that, where it, I guess, I don't know if that's where it starts or where it, or when you were pointing on the mouse by here, I mean, I know that is, that is a low, a little bit further, I guess, towards the door.
The point is, we would need a, a different graphic, maybe the, the GIS aerial?
Because I know that area's always wet.
Oh, did you, did you want to use that instead? Or you want the GIS?
I, yeah, exactly, we've got it.
Okay.
Sorry. There we go. Yeah, yeah. Here we go. All right. This, I've got two graphics here. This one is really interesting. So this is from the Currituck County GIS and this is an elevation map that uses colors to, to illustrate elevation. You can see our, our subject property here is, is bounded by the yellow. On this map, yellows and greens are high and blues and purples are low. And this is Tigmatar Ditch coming through. Okay, yeah, here's Freedom Avenue, it originates up here in the subdivision, it comes under Freedom and Avenue, it comes through the edge of our property and then it goes under Spot Road. And then you can see it gets low here as it passes between Spot Road and the Point Golf Course. And here it has to do a, a dogleg through a couple of culverts and then it continues across the golf course and down. And so this is where I believe the, the hole that you're talking about would be. And you can see the topo there that, yes, you're low. It's, um...
Well, that's a pond. Yeah, that's the pond.
Okay.
But the, the other where I'm, where I was discussing, where you're, right about where your, the cursor is.
Yes.
That is a low area that's always very, very wet, which, I mean, obviously it's marked as a low area.
Which, I mean, you, you can see, even though that may be the pond, you can see the areas around it are, are low as well. And then you continue south and we don't have it here, but, but, um, not, you continue south not very far and then it makes a, a pretty hard turn and goes out to Currituck Sand.
So part of your, and I was gonna ask this earlier, but you're the drainage guy, so part of your stormwater plan, like, and I know y'all talked about the Tigmatar ditch, so part of y'all's was from your property, you're, you would be adding water, so you would clear down through that and clean that out, that area to make it flow better so it doesn't sit...
I don't do any of that down there. I don't do any of that.
No. Our responsibility is we, we are reducing flow from our property into Tigmatar Ditch on the 10-year storm, reducing it down to the two-year flows from our property. And we are not in, we are, the, the modeling and the design will not increase the flows to the ditch from our property on the 100-year storm. And the model will incorporate, will start about here and incorporate all the land north of there that drains to that ditch.
Sounds like problems to me.
All right. So my concern is still, goes back to Spot Road and increasing the elevation, building up lots and then trying to control that water to move west down Spot Road into whatever BMP you're gonna use without spilling over into the other low-lying areas in this community. That's, I mean, I asked Mark, or Mr. Bissell that earlier, I asked you that, and that's still the concern. Somebody who looks at topographic maps for a living, I know how those colors work, I know what all that means. When you go back to that, you can go right back to that one, the topo if you want to.
Well, I, I wanted, I, I wanted to go to this one to, to shoot.
Okay.
Now, just because I wanna, I wanna make sure that, that we are on the same page. How do I?
I can see where your mouse is.
Okay. So, is the gap here between the lots and, and the road?
Mm-hmm. Not just that one, though, the one on the east as well.
Right, right.
Going up by that other pond.
But this sliver of land right here, that, we will, we will regrade the roadside ditch there. See, this will be built up so that the water from, on our site, everything from, from our developed site will be flowing back and over to the pond. We're not gonna take the sliver of water that's coming off of the road and take it to our pond. We're gonna take it down the road, under our entrance and continue down the road all the way to Tigmatar Ditch, the way that it goes now. But right now, it's a pretty weak ditch. It is kinda overgrown and we, we will...
He's tired.
It's edge, you know, we... We will, the design will ensure that we have positive grade, um, positive drainage from one end to the other.
But you're gonna have to go, you're gonna have to go positive grade all the way up to the northeast corner. Right? Because you've got a very small setback backing up to the other properties on North Spot Road, right there where your mouse is. Right? There's not a lot of land there between the open space and the, the lot lines on the plat. So converting all that water coming from there down and over, as well as accounting for the collection and movement of the water from north across the property, however that happens.
Well, I, I mean, we're getting into the weeds of, of designing a grading plan. It's, it's, yes, that is our design challenge that, that we have to meet. All of that water has to be accounted for and we have to manage the water that we need to manage in order to, to not increase the flows and reduce the flows on the 10-year storm. And any other pockets of water that isn't being managed, we have to still continue to convey to its ultimate, its ultimate discharge.
That brings up, I could, quick question, looking at this map real quick, just help me understand it then. So as it exists right now, will some of that water from those property owners on the east side of that property there, does that kinda migrate onto that land and work its way westward to the ditch right now currently?
Currently, this, this parcel drains that direction.
Yes, so, so, so some of that, so if you put that berm right there, if you build it up to keep it on your property, then the water currently now that's going over there is gonna back up in their land and have to go south. Is that correct?
Again, we're getting into the details of, of the grading plan, but yes, any water that's coming, it's, it's, it's the same as, as Freedom Park. Any water that's coming onto our site now, we have to identify and we have to accommodate.
Okay.
And yes, that is, that is an important part of the, the design that we do.
Okay. All right, that, that's why, that's...
And, and Mr. Deal, just real quickly, 'cause I'm looking at the, the blue, the, the part of the map that's in front of us, that dark blue and the darker blues on, on your property...
Yes.
Is that mainly the pond that I'm looking at?
Yeah, you can see the ditch coming through here.
Right.
And there's a little wetland off of it, and then the pond will be situated basically in that area. Again, that's naturally what the water's wanting to do. We're going to take, make use of that and then modify it as we need to.
And just to confirm, Mr. Deal, you are not testifying that the water is going to be backing up onto adjacent lands. Is that correct?
Correct. We, yes.
Yes. You account for all the water that is flowing?
All of the water, that's, again, why we comprehensively are looking at everything. But that is really detailed design of what we do in actually producing construction plans and grading and drainage plans.
Correct. That is part of the, will be part of the plan, and that is required.
Yes.
Okay. I know Mr. Bissell had, wanted to respond to some of the things that we heard as well.
So we want to do whatever we can to try to make things better. I think there are some things we can do to make it better. One of the things is to study the stormwater and to find out exactly what's going on downstream and make some recommendations. And we're willing to offer up, of course, you know, if, without an approval, nothing is going to happen to make it better. With an approval, we will do this modeling. We will find out what is blocking the water downstream. The developer is willing to actually clean out Tigmatar Ditch downstream if the property owners allow the right of access to do that, and if it looks like that would improve the We can build the berm higher along, as high as it needs to be, along South Spot Road to protect those properties to the greatest degree we can. You know, one of the people up said, well, we need public water over there. Well, this is the best opportunity the neighbors have to get public water. We're bringing it all the way down from, well, the beginning of the map. We're bringing public water all the way down to here. It's going to be tapped by adjacent property owners. There is no other plan to have community water in this neighborhood.
Mr. Bissell, if you would state back again, and I'm writing down what you said, so far as the additional upstream and downstream studies that you said you'd do, as well as the developer would agree to clean those out?
Yes.
To help produce the, have the flow?
The ditch, the Tigmatar Ditch downstream of Spot Road between South Spot and the golf course access.
Commissioners, if I may, Jamie Schwedler with Parker Poe. Those would be subject to right of entry for the other property owners allowing us to come in and clean those out.
If they would allow you, yeah.
And if, to address the traffic concern on South Spot Road, we are willing to agree to make that an emergency vehicle, egress only, so that all the normal traffic goes out to Carrot Hook Highway from the development, if that's allowed.
All right.
Yeah, that's what Jamie says on...
There's the internal connectivity score that has to be met, so I think that's going to meet that.
I mean, you could tell them they got to go, but I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Big speed boat.
Yeah.
Anyway, we want to be a good neighbor. We want to do whatever we can to make the situation better.
I believe I have one more question from Mr. Hannig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we're not addressing is the simple fact that all the water that's coming off of Freedom Business Park is being diverted to Tigmatar Ditch, which is going to exacerbate the amount of water that's coming under South Spot Road and is going to cause a backup and cause our properties to flood. No one's addressing that at all. That has got to be addressed, because currently, a bunch of that water comes onto this property, right? Well, now they're going to divert that water to go to Tigmatar Ditch. So that's more water going into Tigmatar Ditch than currently goes in there now. And Mr. Deal, great guy, love him, done a long time, he said it himself, what happens on our South Spot Road is not their responsibility. But they can sit up there and say all they want to say, they want to say to get this project approved. Who's going to pay for that issue? They're not going to pay for it. Who's going to pay for all the ditches that have to be dug up and put underneath the Point Road? They're not going to pay for that. We're going to have to ask Mr. Hall to pay for that. So these are problems that have to get resolved before we go any further. And if I can get some clarity on that road, I believe that that road can be an emergency-only road, because you have a main entrance. We have other neighborhoods in Currituck County that have one main road in and an emergency entrance to get into it in case of emergencies.
Currituck Club is a prime example.
Yeah.
So I believe that can be a condition of your...
That's the problem.
What about the...
I believe that can be a condition of your approval.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Bobby a question? Now, far as them taking, if they're agreeing to do, but like you said, far as the water, and I know exactly what you're talking about on Freedom Park, I was just...
Right.
But, I mean, like I said, they'd have to get access to that, because it's going to affect their property as well, too, if this was approved.
Right. Again, this isn't an issue that they've caused. This isn't an issue that this developer has caused. This is an existing issue that is going to get exacerbated by the development of this property, plain and simple. So, again, if we can get clarity on that road, that would be great. I'm telling you that the traffic, I'm not a traffic expert, but bikes, kids, you name it, all on South Spot Road with 400 golfers coming in and out of there every day, that's going to be a problem. And I want someone to tell me who's going to take the hit with someone that's killed on that road. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, in the UDO, that interconnectivity score is a requirement, so I don't think it's anything that can be a condition placed on the decision tonight. That would actually, that would end up being like a variance, and that's not anything that's before this board.
What if you made it a one-way in? And nobody can go out?
I think it's got to be... If that works, I think it would solve the problem, because nobody's going to want to come down South Spot Road just to go in there.
If it's a one-way in, nobody's going to use it.
I don't know if that's allowed.
You skin cats a couple different ways.
Yeah.
I don't know what the answer is.
Well, I mean, the issue is more, the water is going to flush through that pond. They're just going to divert it to Tigmatar.
I guess Mr. Deal has something else he wants to...
Which is going to overflow.
Just a second. Yes, Mr. Deal, you have something else?
I just wanted to clarify, or, there, no water is going to be introduced to Tigmatar Ditch that doesn't go there today. All of this, this whole area drains to Tigmatar Ditch, including the area behind Freedom Park, including all of Freedom Park. The reason we model these things, and we'll say it again, is you, so we're talking about some water that's maybe isolated behind the storage units in Freedom Park, and hey, how are you going to deal with that? Well, we're going to take that, we're going to make sure it doesn't get isolated there by our development, and we're going to deliver it to Tigmatar Ditch, which is where it goes today. And, okay, well, now you're delivering that water faster. Well, that's why we model it. If we're delivering that water faster, we have to account for that, to make sure that when the water leaves our property, it's not leaving at a higher rate than it was before construction, and it's leaving at a slower rate for the 10-year storm than it was before construction. So this project, this design, is not going to exacerbate the flooding that's happening.
And that's what the ponds are for.
I just wanted to clarify that. That's what the ponds are for, that's what the design is for.
Potentially two ponds.
That is specifically my job. That is what I do.
So high here.
And the developer, you said the developer would agree if this project was approved to clean out the Tigmatar Ditch? I mean, were, to help it flow?
I think that's...
Yeah.
If they got...
Yeah. So just a couple points here. One of the reasons that we're talking about what's allowed to be a condition, what's not, is that North Carolina law only allows this board to impose conditions that are reasonably related to the impacts of our project. And so we're hearing a lot about existing problems. I think the point was made that if this is not approved tonight, there will be no solutions to those problems. We're trying to offer a solution by incorporating things into our project, and we're willing to offer additional conditions if they're directly reasonably related to our impacts. And that was one of the suggestions for the cleaning out the Tigmatar Ditch. We are willing to offer a condition that says if Mr. Deal's model shows that cleaning out that Tigmatar Ditch would kind of have a better impact on how that flow goes, that we'd be, and we get this rights of entry from all of those other property owners, we would be willing to clean out the Tigmatar Ditch, I think, to the golf course spot that you had mentioned. So that is a condition that we're willing to do. We're also willing to, even though our expert has provided the only expert testimony with regards to traffic safety, the only licensed engineer in this room is the one that we provided, the only tendered expert is the one that we provided, he's met his burden on whether there would be safety impacts with regards to how South Spot Road is accessed today. That is the only competent material and substantial evidence before this board, and we're entitled to approval based on that prima facie case that's not been rebutted by any of the opinions that have been offered by late witnesses, which your county attorney has told you can't consider, or the facts of personal observations. However, we would be willing to limit that access road for emergency purposes. We understand the UDO doesn't allow that. I'm happy to have a condition that says if allowed or if permitted by some means, whether that's a variance from another board or some sort of code changing, we're willing to explore that with the staff. I just want to be clear and transparent that it appears that there's no fix to that today. So, again, not necessary because we've met our prima facie burden, but as good neighbors, as Marcus said, we're willing to write a condition to that. It would just have to be subject to getting relief that we're not sure we're able to get, but, again, we're willing to explore that if that would help.
We haven't addressed Judge Zwanick's property value going down because of his sale. A negative.
Yeah. I'm happy to just to provide a summary and remind you what your county attorney has already told you, which is the only expert testimony, only expert testimony can be given as to property value, as to impacts of traffic. There are only two experts in the room that have been part of the record that have given you that, and that's Mr. Howell and Andy with VHB. And so that evidence was made in our prima facie case. We understand the personal observations of folks on the road, but they cannot offer you expert opinion on impacts to property value, and nothing that they've given you overcomes that personal observation of what they think or what might happen. It's an actual expert based on what experts rely on in the field and what's admitted in court. So we respect everyone's opinion here tonight. We're not trying to discount that. There's just factors of law, as Ms. Jarvis noted, that come into play with these quasi-digital hearings. And we've brought that evidence to you before you tonight, and we're entitled to entry of that special use permit, because that's what the law requires. And that's all we're asking for here tonight. So we appreciate your time and happy to make any of our expert witnesses available for more questions, but we know we've taken a lot of time tonight. Thank you.
We have one more question from Mr. Hannig.
Sorry, y'all. I have a question for the traffic study expert.
Yes, sir.
Did the traffic study expert take into consideration, I heard several times him talking about extrapolating out December to August on 158, he never once mentioned South Spot Road, extrapolating that out with the influx of people that are there for basically six or seven months of the year, or to include any type of pedestrian or bicycle traffic or anything like that. Didn't hear any of that in his findings or in his study. If he can speak to that, that'd be great.
Could you address that, please, sir?
Yeah, so the question was relating to the Spot Road in general and growth related to Spot Road traffic. Our traffic is overwhelmingly using the access directly to 158. I think the developer would be okay if 100% of the traffic exits onto 158. The delay at intersections is most prominent on the side street. It's on the stop-controlled approach, the left end and right end. Just sitting in there, I did a test of just 50% increases all across the board, and the right end are almost free-flowing, the left end have marginal delay. It's the side street, it's the stop-controlled approach that really carries a lot more delay that could be on Spot Road today and in the future. So I think the one-way pair that was brought up might be one-way. We don't foresee a lot of traffic exiting onto Spot Road, exiting at the stop control is where all the delay is at the intersection, or the heaviest delay. I think that if we had a one-way, as the commissioner suggested, I think that might be, if it's allowable, could be a way to force 100% of the traffic out onto the driveway, and then we wouldn't have any more traffic accessing the stop-controlled approach. But, but that said, most of the traffic, regardless, will be exiting onto that approach. And I don't recall if there was any, so if there were any sidewalks planned or anything as part of this...
Because if I'm living in a development, and I know there's a trash dump right there, I don't care if I got trash pickup or not, if I got to wait for Mondays and Fridays to get bigger, I'm going there constantly dumping stuff off. So they have every access to, so they will be using that road to dump. I mean, there's no question.
If you make it a one-way in, they can't use it.
Well, they'll still use it, they'll go around North Spot Road, go around, loop around, and come right back in. They're still going to use the dump.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, he did not answer my question. Did he take into consideration the amount of golfers, the pedestrians, the bicycles, the golf carts, et cetera, on South Spot Road? And I'm pretty sure he did not include the amount of golfers coming off of the point, which is about 400 people a day.
And just to follow up on that, is that a standard DOT practice to account for golfers?
No. So NC DOT publishes traffic on the road. We reviewed that. It's a published AAT, average annual traffic, daily traffic of 550. We know it fluctuates depending on the time of the year. And we analyze this traffic based on proper engineering standards. And, you know, our impact to this road is very minor relative to the traffic.
About how many vehicles during the peak hours?
We had less than five vehicles in the peak, less than one every 10 minutes from this side.
That's possible.
From this.
Is that because the primary entrance is going to be on 158?
Yes. At 158, you're going to, you'll have the option to turn left out of that driveway where you have left and right turn lanes.
All right, everybody, let's get back in control here.
So if I'm a resident in there and I want to head to the south, I can take the direct access where I just have traffic associated with the site, there's a left and right turn lanes, there's less delay, that's going to be the route that folks are going to take to stay off of Spot Road. That's, if I live there, that's the route I would take.
But the question was, when DOT is doing something like this, you're in a resort area, and the golf course is considered an amenity of a resort area, so it's not like a residential house or a roofing business or something like that, it's got hundreds of people in and out of there every day. That's what the question was, is how do you account for that? Or do you, or I guess you couldn't, is what you're saying.
So our count includes a certain amount of traffic onto Spot Road heading east and a certain amount of traffic going out, heading west to 158. Today, there's roughly twice as much traffic exiting westbound to go to 158 that is going eastbound. That is the golf traffic most likely, because they have to enter one way south of Spot Road, and they exit via Spot Road. Our count reflects what's happening out there with a more golf traffic exiting versus entering, and our study reflects that additional traffic pattern that's out there today.
You got, I mean, you got guys, and I know this for a fact, there's a guy that lives in Moyacque that lives three miles from Mill Run, and he drives to the point, because they have probably the nicest practice facility, not trying to insult anybody else's golf course here, but they ride 30 minutes to go hit balls at the point, because he has a nice driving range.
And Mr. Chairman, he's still not addressing the issue of the amount of people that come down South Spot Road.
I don't think he's able to...
I do have an update for you, Senator Hannig. The internal street connectivity standards, conservation subdivisions are exempt from that minimum requirement. So that road could be emergency access only.
Well, there you go.
And there you go. Still not answering the question, though. Dan surrounded about 20 different times when I asked the question. It's a simple question. It's a simple question. Do you know or do you not know? Do you know or do you not know, or do you take into account the amount of pedestrians, bicycles, golf carts, scooters, you name it, going down South Spot Road and the 400 people coming off of the golf course, heading west to go stop at that stop sign and try to make a left-hand turn? You're not, you're not even thinking about that. You're not even considering that. I live it every day.
Mr. Hannig, please let him answer the question.
He's not answering the question.
I don't think he did that study.
How can he?
We did not do a pedestrian study at this location. However, our count did include a lot of golf-related traffic, obviously, based on the exiting traffic. And if it's emergency vehicle access only, then 100% of the traffic would be going out onto 158 directly, which eliminates that left turns at the stop sign, turns to and from Stop, South Spot Road, and very, even less impacted projected under that instance.
Okay. Does any commissioners have any other questions?
I just want to clarify the conditions that are possibly agreeable.
Yes.
One of the conditions would be curbside, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And if it's allowed, which according to Ms. Turner, it is allowed, that there is only one way in on South Spot Road?
Yes, and we prefer to phrase it as if allowed, and that could be by the code, just to clarify.
I think we should. We should also talk about, is that stubout gonna become a cul-de-sac?
Well, I think that's what we need, you probably need some planning oversight as to exactly how that would be filtered.
Right, because you're right at your open space, right on the nose, and putting in a cul-de-sac where it's right away could potentially impact those lot areas and that road configuration. Looking at Mark, because that could be an impact. And if it's, so is it going to be not there, or it's gonna be emergency vehicle access only? That's gonna probably dictate how that road's designed.
If I may, I think.
I think we had said emergency access, which would just gate it.
I thought Commissioner Jarvis just said one way in.
Or one way.
Whichever's allowed.
One access, I thought is what you said.
I'm just trying to make sure that there are conditions that the developer is willing to agree to. We've also heard that there's a willingness to agree to clean the ditch through the culvert under South Spot Road, through the golf course if it's allowed, and if the modeling shows that this is an issue.
That is correct. I think the exception might be what happens at the culvert because we would need DOT sign-off on that. So all of that would be subject to the property owners or the controlling entities allowing us to make those improvements.
What I had heard is that when the modeling is complete, if it shows improvements would help, they would do the improvements. If they do not show improvements, they're not gonna clean them. My understanding is they would only do the cleanings if the model showed improvement. They weren't just gonna flat-out clean them.
That's correct.
Correct. So if they don't show any improvement in their model, they're not gonna just clean them arbitrarily.
That's correct, because that's how the.
I thought I heard.
Well, that's how the findings would work, right? So it's showing that we're not causing this, so.
They're just not gonna clean them just to clean them. They're gonna, so.
Well, they also have to get permission to be able to.
Correct, but if his model shows it's not gonna improve it, they're not gonna do anything.
Correct. And that would be the situation today if it's denied. Nothing would happen, but if we're approved and we show that our modeling that Mr. Deal explained would cause, would not be able to be kind of satisfied with that second pawn, and we would need to clean out those ditches, then we would, subject to the property owners and DOT.
I understood, I understood. But if it didn't, you're just not gonna arbitrarily clean them just to clean them.
Correct. It would be subject to those conditions.
It is an issue.
All right. Do you have any other questions?
No.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Just to clarify, Commissioner Jarvis, so we would say if allowed, access on South Spot Road would be restricted to emergency access or similar design, Jenny?
Yes.
Or one way in.
Or one way. Okay. Okay, so I think the correct is if allowed, access on South Spot Road would be restricted to emergency access or one way in or similar design.
Yeah.
And then, one more clarity on the.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Turner, one more clarity again, just on the schools. The current, the current committed capacity of the high schools is a 105%. That doesn't include this development right now, correct? Okay, but yeah, it does not include this development, but includes all the previous developments that can be built out.
Updated through the end of 2024.
Gotcha, thank you.
I think she said that we're in some part of zoning.
Correct.
Not necessarily approved.
Can I, I don't know which one I need to ask. It's okay. As far as phasing, what's the time difference between phase one and phase two?
Yeah. And, you know, this is something that we discussed, and to address your point about adequate public schools, the provision about being in place within two years is still in the code. We can do phase one, which is 35 lots, earliest record date, June 2026. I knew that was, this was a recommendation in the staff report. And then phase two, which is 21 lots, we could do earliest recording date, December of 2026, about six months later, and so.
So six months?
Yes, uh-huh, in between those. Earliest record date would be over a year from now for the first 35, June 2026.
All right. Any other questions?
Comment.
Yes, sir.
And Mrs. Turner.
Yes.
So that committed capacity has been on the books for 10-plus years and not been developed. And I've raised that question before. We can't really pin things on committed capacity. It's actually what's on the ground.
Evidently, we can.
Committed capacity is a tool that the board can use for phasing.
Correct.
And decision-making.
Correct.
But some of it's been on the books a long time and not developed. And we've talked about trying to go in and assess that and see actually what is there.
All right. Anything else? I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion. I've closed the public hearing, David. I'm sorry, buddy. We're gonna open the meeting back up, and we need a motion from the board concerning And we need a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I still want to think on a few things that we talked about. I'll make a motion to continue this to our next meeting to look at some of this other stuff. The public hearing you've already closed, correct?
Correct. I'll move a motion to continue it to our next meeting of.
May 5.
May 5.
Cinco de Mayo.
I have a motion to continue till May 5. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, I will not be here May 5, so I'm being out of the country, so.
I might go with you.
I'm just letting you know, I will not be here.
You're gonna miss my birthday, Mike.
Well, I would not be able to vote on it, so just so you know.
Like I said, I may go with you. Okay, we have a motion and a second proper. Do we have any further discussion?
Can I?
Yes, sir, you can.
Well, I won't be here.
Just more information from the drainage plan. I know this is a preliminary, you know, hearing, but if there's more information that we can get as far as drainage plan, it doesn't have to be exact, just something that I can kind of base some thoughts off of.
It would also give the applicant an opportunity to approach the other owners of the property that they would need permission to do drainage or drainage.
The drainage. I think that would be helpful.
We know we're not gonna have a full board here at that meeting.
That'll be okay.
Okay.
Up to y'all.
We're happy to be here either, but.
About tonight would still be in play, so we're happy to provide that information, but we wouldn't be providing new testimony, I believe, on it.
Would it be better to move it to the third meeting, third Monday?
Second meeting.
The second meeting on the third Monday?
That's if you want a full board. That's a board's decision. I mean, if, like I said.
Kevin made the motion.
That's fine.
Commissioner Etheridge seconded. If Kevin would like to amend his motion, he'll have to get permission from Commissioner Etheridge, and he can do so.
I will amend it to the 19th of May, which I believe is the second meeting of that month.
Okay. Kevin has amended his motion. Do you second it, Commissioner Etheridge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I say, and the evidence, the hearing is closed, the.
Public hearing is closed.
Okay, I just want to be.
It will be for a vote, yea or nay.
Yes, that's my motion.
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
You're gonna be here.
But not.
You'll be in part.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
I think I'm gonna leave with him.
Yeah.
Pass that down to Leanne. Lord almighty, I feel my.
And just for clarification, the board still cannot have any outside conversations?
Yes, correct.
There's still, no communications and discussions still because.
With any of those people?
With anybody.
Not with one another?
Just the commissioners, we can't.
Yeah, with one another, it's.
While they're clearing out.
No.
Okay.
Cannot receive emails.
Megan, the drainage expand, like expanding on the drainage. That's, I can still look at that, right? Otherwise, if I just ask for something, I can't legally look at.
Exactly. This is the second thing.
That's what I did.
Yeah, the hearing is gonna close, then it's gonna close.
Okay.
Fair enough.
She said she's done.
Oh, fucking poor Renee. You picked a good night to come.
I'm gonna be in Alaska.
For math.
You're gonna miss my birthday. Sorry.
All right.
I'll catch you a fish.
We, the next item of business.
On page one.
Mm-hmm. It's quarter after 10, folks.
Oh, we've been to one, two o'clock in the morning.
Oh, I've done it many times, but I was a lot younger when I used to do it.
It started at 6:00 this morning. It was pretty early day.
We're running 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah. Back in the day, we had some 2:00 in the morning meetings.
We're only going an hour a day.
Yeah.
The rest of this is not heavy duty.
Could somebody check with Selena? I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and go back to new business. Ordinance amendment, section 95, Code of Ordinance, exceptions for surfing, kiteboarding during dangerous conditions and adding double red flags.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This ordinance amendment has been brought to you upon recommendation of, I think his name's Michael Cherry, the contractor with, the Ocean Rescue contractor we have, along with chief of fire and EMS, Chief Melton. And so what this does is during the time, when there's red flags, surfing is still allowed.
Ah.
Yeah, given that there is a leash attached to the surfboard. This is adding kiteboarding as well as bodyboard with fins. And those terms are defined within the ordinance as well. I modeled that after Deering County has an ordinance that is similar in that they also have an exception for kiteboarding and bodyboard with fins. So that's included. And also, there is an additional requirement to have double red flags as opposed to just one red flag whenever conditions are not appropriate for swimming. And then we added language in here, "All users of the Atlantic Ocean within the county's jurisdiction, including but not limited to swimmers, surfers, kite surfers, and fishermen, shall follow the orders of Ocean Rescue Life Guards and/or law enforcement, which direct the users regarding the safest manner or location for engaging in their chosen activity." And also, there's an additional, there's a civil penalty added. Prior to, it was just a criminal penalty, and so we added a civil penalty as well, just to add an extra penalty and not just constrict it to a criminal conviction. So, yeah, and we have a, the whole board, it would take a unanimous board to adopt this tonight at the first reading.
So moved.
Have a motion?
I second.
Second. Any discussion? Here or none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Okay.
Number two?
So the next two amendments are similar. They add a criminal penalty provision for violation of that ordinance pursuant to Senate Bill 300. In the event that a local government ordinance has a criminal penalty as a punishment for violation, it has to be within the ordinance itself. So I think it was last year, we added that to a few of the beach ordinances, and there was just a couple that were inadvertently left out. So this first one is for the parking permits. We added the criminal penalty to, or, excuse me, blocking for shore. We've added a criminal penalty to that. Also pursuant to Senate Bill 300, if you add a criminal penalty, it cannot be adopted at its first reading. It can be adopted only after the second reading, but you can, you still need to make a motion tonight on whether you would like to adopt this or not.
So moved.
Can I add one question? I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now I have a question. Thank you. This and the next one, due to the beach ordinance is coming into play, obviously, this weekend because that's when the time starts with the passes and everything. When we have our joint meeting with the school board on the 29th, can the second vote be taken on that in that meeting? To go ahead and put it into play ASAP?
I approve this message.
Sure.
We'd have to have.
We should be, as long as it's advertised.
We'd have to advertise it.
Like, since it's a special meeting, that topic would have to be advertised, but we could do that.
Can we add that in it so it can be put into play when the, because if not, it's just gonna take longer and longer.
Okay, yeah. Can do that.
All right, thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next one, or is this?
The next one is basically the same thing. It's adding a criminal penalty provision to the parking ordinance for the, there are certain subdivisions within our ordinance that we can regulate parking. This adds the criminal penalty provision, and it limits the fine up to $50. That's a limitation of Senate Bill 300 as well.
Motion?
Second.
And can that be added as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Here or none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Next one is board appointments for recreation advisory. Reappoint Ted Chukuki. Next one is board appointments for recreation advisory, reappoint Ted Chukuki, and appoint James Rose, and appoint Danielle Barco for the recreation board.
Need for approval. I don't see Danielle Barco.
I don't see Danielle's name.
Oh.
We got a new handout here today that puts her on there.
I wanted to give that to you, Mr. Chairman, just to read.
Leanne, I thought we were tight.
You did.
I know, kidding.
Well, Danielle was my appointment, I didn't get it in in time. We had a motion for approval.
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Citizen of Advisory, reappoint Ella Galloway, Joan Normandy Dolberg, and appoint Susan Holton to fill in an unexpired, an unexpired term, and Elizabeth Kelly to finish an unexpired term.
Motion for approval.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, consent agenda?
Need for approval.
Second.
Motion for approval, second, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Commissioners report, Mr. Etheridge?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. McCord?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Angel?
Uh, so I had some pretty good meetings over on the beach this week. I went to Corolla and met with the Wellhead Property Owners Association. They had great things to say about one of the county employees, Eli. I'm not, he does something with stormwater, I'm not 100% sure, but he got, he got lots of praise out there. They did talk about bike paths, not bike paths, bike racks at the dune crossings, as well as golf carts being an issue out there, profit, parking on private property and.
Every year.
Yep.
Did I say that?
So, um, that was one of the, the things discussed there. Corolla, we had a fantastic meeting, special thanks to the Sheriff's Department, Sergeant Col, Colbert?
Sergeant Corbell.
Sergeant Corbell, Captain Smith, and Chief Walker for coming out. Good discussion with the community, good community engagement. Had like 60-plus people on the Saturday before Easter, so at 2:00 on, I mean, it was fantastic, great discussion, great community involvement, love seeing it.
Is that it?
Uh, working on the not silent toll ferry stuff, so more, more to follow on that.
We've blocked them twice.
And that is it.
All right, Ms. Rose?
I just, I attended the Lower Currituck Fish Fry on Friday. It was delicious, and I just want to say thank you to all our volunteer firemen that work so hard.
Mr. Payman?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Jarvis?
I want to thank Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department for responding to Woods Fire in my neighborhood on a Sunday that happened to be Easter. Their diligence, their time there, I'm very appreciative and just want to thank them for that and minimizing the damage. I also want to thank the staff and all the departments for another successful graduation of our Citizens Academy. I appreciate the expertise that you provide to all of our citizens who willingly come and want to learn more. I also want to congratulate Kim Twine, our Director of Elections, the entire Elections Department, and the Board of Elections for winning the I Voted sticker contest. It was a national recognition of a design one first place for small and medium jurisdictions. It was designed by one of our students and a graduate of Nap Early College. It's a very proud moment, and the sticker, if you haven't seen it, is beautiful, and hopefully you'll have a similar contest coming up in the next election, because I think it is a great way to get our students and our county involved in elections. Thank you.
Thank you. I have several things, but I'm going to skip those tonight and save them for next meeting, so county managers report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, to welcome Melissa Futral as our Assistant County Manager. She officially started today.
Yay. Great first day.
Great first day, you're still here, it's almost, it's almost tomorrow.
Yeah, welcome.
Good to see your first and second day.
And then, just briefly, I wanted to touch on the ferry tolls. So I reached out to Whitney with Warden Smith, and she indicated that she had spoken with Representative Kidwill, and that he had indicated that he is disappointed with the Senate's proposal, that she had also spoken with Representative Goodwin, and he is also opposed to the ferry tolls. So that, that's good news for us. I also plan out to reach, plan to reach out to the managers from Pamlico, Dare, Craven, and Beaufort Counties, and Whitney also shared that Pamlico is very engaged on the issue, so keep you updated.
That's where Laura is, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's in the Senate budget that passed.
That's correct.
Yeah. Quick question, did we send out our resolution about the teacher pay to all the other counties yet? Okay, can we check to see if the school board did the same?
Yes.
They did? Okay, good, so we've covered, okay. County attorneys report?
A couple weeks ago, I attended the North Carolina Association of Police and Sheriff's Attorneys Conference, that's why I wasn't at the last meeting, and it was very informative. I really appreciate the opportunity to go to that, so that's it.
All right, now we need to recess our regular meeting and reconvene as the Tourism Development Authority.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, manager?
Okay, I believe there are two budget amendments before you this evening for approval. They were shared in the packet.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, adjourned, we need to have a motion to adjourn the Tourism Development Authority meeting and reconvene as the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District.
So moved.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Budget Amendment.
Yes, sir, there was just one budget amendment this evening for Ocean Sands.
Have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we need a motion to adjourn our Ocean Sands Water Sewer District Board Special Meeting and reconvene our regular meeting.
I make a motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No one to debate, Kate.
Would you like me to move to go into closed session?
Yes, please.
I'll move that we go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to preserve attorney-client privilege, and NCGS 143-1, 318.11A3 to preserve attorney-client privilege in the matter, entitled Currituck County versus John Elliott, and NCGS 143-318.11A5 to establish or instruct county staff on the position to be taken by the county regarding a bid for county-owned property located at 122 Dozier Street, Jarvisburg, North Carolina, PIN 110B00700110000, and NCGS 143318.11A5 to establish or instruct county staff on the position to be taken regarding county-owned property located at 500 Hunt Club Drive, Corolla, North Carolina, PIN 012000001K0000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.